Assalamualaikum believers and those in studio and those who will be joining us on our YouTube platform. Welcome to our Saturday morning lineup. The first session is our Saturday morning Taliyah. And we're here every Saturday morning, 7:00 AM Eastern Standard Time for a Taliyah, a study session. And Imam Michael Sahir out of Indianapolis, Indiana is our host for this session. And we are studying the commentary on selected verses of the Holy Quran from the documented teachings of Imam Wahid bin Muhammad. May Allah be pleased with him and grant him paradise. So we always want to start off by giving you the CWSC's position on our presentations.
The views expressed by the host guests are their own and not necessarily the position of AM360 or the parent corporation, the Community Wide Shura Conference, CWSC Incorporated. AM360 content is intended as a community service and is not designed to provide specific personal, medical, financial, or legal counsel or other professional advice, and no liability shall extend to the host or hostesses of AM360 or CWSC. We encourage you to seek an advisor for your specific circumstances.
Okay, and again, this is the book that we're studying from the commentary on selected verses of the Holy Quran from the presentations of Imam Wahid bin Muhammad. So we want to welcome Imam Michael Sahir. Assalamualaikum.
Waalaikum Assalam, Sister. I was thinking about your last name first, I was trying to stop. To all the believers. Is it all been? Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Assalamualaikum, ma'am. May Allah praise you to Allah.
Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Again, the honor to be here, always a pleasure to be with the believers. And so we go ahead and get started, if you may. I don't think there's any other announcements before.
No, sir. Go right ahead.
Okay, and we have stopped at the end of... I had a mark on my page, I see what... At the end of page 94, oh, 94, we stopped last week. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Did we complete page 94, did we stop?
No, sir. I believe with the last section you read was Satan fears God. Iblis was a djinn, not an angel. The djinns are created to worship Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala.
Yes, sir. And we stopped at the end of the second paragraph.
Yes, sir.
The last sentence says, "I invited the brother to do this," okay. Right, so now we know where we stopped, we pick up at page 94. Let me say this first, I was like, you're not a shiitani, you're a jin. And page 94, it's called Table Talk. Prophet, Heaven, yes, sir.
Assalamualaikum, brother, ma'am. I don't know whether you remember or not, but I think that when you were saying it was any announcements, it was something that you were going to say at the end of the last production before you began the reading in that regard. So I, you know, just was reminding you if it's a reminder there or not, you know.
Well, you can hear me out, because I'm trying to be... You said that I was going to...
Well, you know, at the very, very, very end there, there was, I wouldn't say controversy, but I was thinking, there was some disagreement in regards to one of the things that was reading in regards to Imam Muhammad. Angel, looking at angel, the commentary that Imam was making, there was one that was disagreeing with that in terms of literally in that regard. And you were given the explanation from the Tafsir of Imam Muhammad that when it was mentioned in the Quran, the angels were questioning and that these were not, these were not real angels. You actually was going, the definition of what an angel is as compared to the djinn nature, being different in that regard. And Iblis was a djinn, he wasn't an angel, but he had the ability to perform, perform as an angel, but his nature was djinn. So that's where the difference was. And of course, we had a call that differ with that. And, you know, you and I had the conversation afterwards that that perhaps would be a good idea, maybe to start out with just giving the Tafsir Imam Muhammad on angel, how angel different, differentiates from being djinn. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the reminder. What else do we want to do? Let's go back to page 89.
89 or 90? Oh, okay, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, and just to...
Clarification.
Clarification, thank you.
Yes.
Page 89. It got subtitles, "Iblis, the djinn was not a true angel." The second one says, "Angels do not reason or question." And the third entry, a subtitle says, "Djinns only performed as an angel." And what Imam Muhammad was saying here, "The story of all the trouble that we are addressing started with someone who was the leader over the angels in heaven. He was not a true angel. He was a djinn. But he was performing in the role of an angel. But how is it possible that a djinn can be the leader for angels? As long as he has no wrong in him, he is superior to the angels. If he can't perform on the plane of the angels and he is a djinn, he is superior to them because he can perform in their role as angels. But he has a role that they cannot perform. They cannot question, question things. They can only respond to what God wants without reasoning or questioning things. But the djinn is like the human being, he is rational. He can question things and he is also capable of performing as an angel. He has the advantage over the angel who can only perform as angel, but cannot question things. The superiority is very clear when God says, quote, "I am going to create immortal human being," meaning that he will be like the djinn and that he will have the ability to examine and question things and come up with his own independent decision. But he will have human nature, not djinn nature. Then the next one, page 90, now subtitle, "Iblis, an angel by circumstances." Human nature means he will be, yeah, yes. Human nature means he will be a sensitive creature and sympathetic. The human being is going to be a different creature from the angel and that he can question and reason and he wants to grow in understanding, wants to grow and knowledge. And he is going to be different from the djinn in that he will be sensitive and sympathetic. He will have compassion on the little guy and sympathy on the suffering. He will be different from both of them, that is, the angel and the djinn. This was announced by God to the djinn, Iblis, who was performing as an angel. He was an angel, whether you can buy it or not. I do not have enough time to deal with all these little things, small things. At that time, Iblis was performing in the role of an angel and he was an angel. However, he wasn't an angel by creation. He was an angel by circumstances. Circumstances had put him with the angels. So he was performing as an angel. But when the test came to see if he was really truly an angel, he couldn't pass it because he wasn't djinn. He could think and reason. He could think and reason it. So when his thinking came into the picture, he says, he said, "No, I am not going to accept this. I am better than this creature. I am the leader way up here above all of them down there. You are going to choose something that doesn't have any wisdom, that doesn't have my wisdom and with my knowledge, my skills, and my ability, I have been faithful to you, God, up here with the angels. I have even kept them for you." He is arrogant, good kind of language. So the last part I read, then we have discussion, it says, "Not a true angel." But God said, "When I have breathed into him of my own spirit or inspired him of my own self, then you accept him, you submit to him." So Iblis arrogant and defiant. And arrogant is, which means he defied the order and he became proud and arrogant. He saw himself too big to submit to what he was asked to do. God said, "Get you down from here, all of you." So the angels, the djinn, and the man were cast down. The Arabic word, kubat, means together, like an organized group in an organized form, they were cast down altogether. God put the rebellious djinn in the life of all human beings because the only ones who were up there was the Father. He had not been born...
We had.
You know, I started thinking, we had not been born or come into existence yet. All of us came from that one he cast down, along with the djinn and the angels too, that rebel. If any rebel, referring to the angels, if any rebel, they were cast down. No, I'm sorry, it's in, yeah, look, yes, the djinn and the angels. If any rebel, they were cast down. We know the story very well. We know the angels accepted, but they were very hesitant and questioned it too. But they finally accepted God's will. This is very important here. Every angel that questioned God's will and said, "What? Would you create something that is going to make trouble in the earth and cause trouble?" Everyone...
And that's it. And caused bloodshed.
And caused bloodshed. Everyone that responded like that was not a true angel. So that's more than just Iblis. There were others pretending or in the character or circumstances of angel, but not true angels. It says, so Imam saying that any of them that questioned the creation of Adam, they were not a true angel. So that's really speaks very clear. And I'm trying to rehash the issue from last week, but for clarity, I think so what we're doing now, for clarity. Imam Muhammad was quite emphatic and came with various points to support. What he was saying was that Iblis was not an angel and he said very plainly, "Angels do not question things." And all the ones that did question were not really angels. They were in the role of an angel. They were by circumstances in that environment, so they performed as an angel. But if they asked questions, they asked that question, they were not true angels, they were djinn. That's my thinking on, anybody have any thoughts on this reading so far?
Yes, sir. No, go ahead, Mark.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to speak to it in this, in this way, only because of my exposing to myself, my my, my way of thinking that was encouraged or influenced by what I was shared, I was taught as a child and, and evolving to, with that thinking, but not realizing that that thinking was still with me. And I'm speaking of seeing angels in a form that, of a physical form. And I didn't see angels as that which submits to the will of Almighty God in the form of, of energy, in the form of electricity, in the form of, of atoms and the electrons. And I didn't see angels in that way. So I now know that those forms, as I think of it, do not have the ability to question what, what role, what task or whatever they're aligned to do by Almighty God's will. But as Iblis, but as you were reading, I heard say wisdom and the skill, other skills and that Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, Allah created the form that is totally submissive and it needs not question. Then there's that form that has submissiveness and it has the additional characteristics, which takes it to a higher form in the sense of its uses, abilities. And I'm seeing that as the djinn. It is an intelligent, but it also is connected with desires and, and it can fulfill its desires. But being in the submissive role or form, it has the attachment identification when necessary, it can submit. So for my, my thinking, I said to myself, I said, "Oh, Allah, then that is how, you know, for myself, that's how I'm to approach it." I mean, it's easier for me rather than coming with my thinking and then applying my thinking to what Malak means. So now when I see Malak or anything close to that, when I see that in the Arbaia, I mean, it takes us to be engaged in both process. The, the, the understanding of the use of what we quote unquote say angel and then understanding the word Malak as it is, as Muhammad, that meme. You can have lake, a lake, a lake by itself, but when that meme is there, it is a form of uniqueness in the information way, way. And Imam has referred to as forces in creation and not, not the thing that I had been influenced by of thinking. So I put my thinking upon what I read and from the interpreter, interpreter's presentation in the Quran. So I'll stop right there.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I love how you, the Ma and the Me and the Mu, the prefix. Yeah, that, that, yeah, that's important for us. This is not part of this discussion, but since you mentioned it, I thought I would say this now. That's just so important how that prefix can really shape a word and how we ought to see it within Arabic. For example, we got Salam, which means peace, but you put Mu in front of it, you got the person, the peace. Another one is Sajud or Sajadah. We should put the Ma in the front, it becomes a place for making Sajadah, which we say Mas, Sajadah or Masjid. So, thank you for mentioning that.
And even Muhammad, as we think of Alhamdulillah.
Yeah, Alhamdulillah, or you got the name Hamid, right? But you put the Mu in front of it, Mu Hamid, you got, Mu is saying the person. Most times you say Mu, like you got Jaddah, Mu Jaddah, person that, that revives. Yeah, so, Alhamdulillah. Our brother Imam Karim, you had a comment?
Yes, you know, the controversy came over the reading of the Quran. And what we have to understand that there are two forms of guidance contained in scripture. It is the guidance that is explicit and it is the guidance that is inferred, inferred, which requires a level of thinking. It put our thinking processes. Now knowing the definition of angel and what has been expressed here that they disagree, that lets us know by inference that these are not truly angels a hundred percent. It is inferred, so we have to use our thinking ability. For the...
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, go ahead, my brother.
No, this is good. Go ahead, finish, finish.
So, you know, like we see the Hoopy Bird. Now, we know birds don't talk. But, but that is an inferred, an inferred subject matter that requires our thinking and our thought and putting rational application to the idea of a bird talking. Everything is in the, the content of the human being.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So that is, that, that is an example of inferred. That they're explicit, which is, there's no ambiguity. And then there are guidance that is inferred. So I think that has caused this concern. Thank you, my brother.
No, thank you. And that's important for us to keep in mind is what is inferred, which requires us to have a second reading or a third reading because the bird didn't talk human language, but everything in creation talks. They just have to speak hu, human language. And we look at our father, well, I refer to all my great African Americans for, in, in the, in our American history, it's father and mother. So our father, George Washington Carver, he talked to plants every day. He said, "And you should listen to them, if you listen to them," that's the key, "if you listen to them, they'll talk back to you." So, but that requires, you know, having, the, the mind being fluid enough, you know, to appreciate those things. Yes, sir, brother Mark.
Yes, sir, Alhamdulillah. Thank you so much. I want to thank you, Imam Michael Sahir, by going back over that because I thought and felt like it would be good for those who listening, who were listening at time last week and be listening in the future to get a clear understanding from our teacher Imam Wahid bin Muhammad. And Karim is right on spot. So that Surah Ali Imran, and that's the third Surah. And it is Ayat 7, where Allah gives the composition of the Quran. And so clearly, this is Mutta Shabihah. That which is allegorical, but it still is revealing, is revealing something to us in regards to angel, djinn, and how these, these different creations, how they are and the capacity for the djinn to be able to perform as an angel. But clearly, djinn nature is different from angel nature. And angel, angel can, the angel does have the ability to perform as a djinn, but the djinn can perform as an angel. And also, we look at the human being in that regard, it can perform as an angel, but yet have human nature. And so this is very, very important that we start with the basic and fundamentals. And actually, Allah says that in Ayat 7, Surah Ali Imran, that the explicit, that which is clear, is the basic and fundamental of the Quran. It is the foundation. And some even said, "Mother, you know, they're very important." And if we don't accept what our teacher is giving us in teaching us the Quran, we can be totally off course and think we're right because we're reading it literally. And so all the verses, just as Karim said, you can't take them just literally because then you're going to be off course. You looking at it as, as angels and thinking Allah gave them special permission to question Him. Allah doesn't need to have a question, answer session with any of His creation. You know, His will is always in command and the angels are executors of Allah's will. They never question. They just execute God's will. I'll stop there, but thank you so much because what you read gives clarity, you know, and the distinction between angel, djinn, Iblis being a djinn, you'll find that in Surah 1850. The Quran always is the foundation for anything that we may not have an understanding, but we have to practice, to use it. And if we use the met, we use the methodology that Imam Muhammad has given us and with Allah's help, Allah will bless us with a better understanding. Thank you. Assalamualaikum.
Waalaikum Assalam. Now, now, on page 90, at the very, the first paragraph, it says, "The superiority is very clear when God says, quote, 'I'm going to create immortal human being,'" end quote, meaning that he will, he will be like the djinn and that he will have the ability to examine and question things and come up with his own independent decision. But he will have human nature, which Imam explains human nature is that the difference between the human and the djinn is that the human will be sensitive creature, be a sensitive creature. the difference between the human and the djinn, that the human will be sensitive creature, be a sensitive creature and sympathetic. But do have the right to come up with his own independent decision. Allah, he respects that. But as you were saying, brother Mark, it don't mean that our independent decision is gonna be correct.
That's right.
Because we are a, a growing, a, uh, e- evolving creature. And, and we learn by making mistakes, you know, or we get some of today and get the rest of maybe tomorrow or next year. But there's a process, we do have independent decision. Now, the challenge and this ties in with last week's uh, conversation, and need to have this discussion going forward. Yes, we want to respect each, every person who comes on. They have a brain, they have a mind. Uh, it says right here, Allah gave us the ability to examine and question things and come up with his own independent decision. So we want to respect that. Also, we have to have, what in my opinion, we had to be a higher respect. Is that uh, if we are students of the Imam, that means we're not the teachers of the Imam. And since we're not the teachers of the Imam, if the Imam says something, I know, I did it for many, many years. The man said a lot of things and I did not understand. I, I, I think Allah for giving me the nature never to reject it. Never ever to reject it. I said, I don't know what you're talking about. I did, I did not, I mean. Y'all remember the long first sentence? No, the fourth sentence, fourth sentence?
Yes, sir.
There was no way, no way we got that.
That's right. What's saying, man, was deep.
Yeah, you know, and, and and all that for, for five, six hours. I like, ooh. But I never, I don't think none of us did. We, we never said. We, we never, and that was the problem for me was last week, when a person says they push back. I said, well, I want to ask them, but why are you even here in this group? And cause the man told us in his Robbinah session, she said, he said, you're not my teacher. He said, she can't hear to teach me, you know, you're in the wrong place. And he said, and he told us, how many times he told us, he said, you're not my student. Leave.
That's the best information. That's the best information he gives on what like this.
He said it just, just there plainly. And he stopped there, he told us, he said, and if you know somebody who's here, really not my student, let me know. So now in that spirit, I'm bringing back to this Saturday morning session. We're not gonna put anybody out per se. But if someone comes and has a, anybody male or female. They come in, they have an issue on a regular basis, what? And we read it from the book, have we just done plainly, the man said this, here it is, pay so and so, Craig, well, so and so. And they continuously be one that rebels, actually use that word, strong word. They, they go, or they cut the grain all the time, say, well, why are you here? We here as students. We're not here as leaders of the man, we're here as, as students of the man. So anybody have, have any thoughts on that? How should we, I'm asking, questioning, how should we deal with that going forward?
I think you, you said, you answered it, uh, just what Imam Muhammad said to his, to his students. And if you weren't a student, you shouldn't be there. And I think the same thing should be applicable. Uh, you know, to you be your way to, uh, to us be our way. And if in fact, if you're not a student, but you wanna contend that you're a student, but you're contending with what the teacher says, this may not be the platform for you, then you, you shouldn't, you shouldn't uh, just tune in and, and, and then just continue to contend with what the teacher is saying. If you're a student, a- and, and I agree with you, the early days, when there was long sessions at the Imam on the fourth Sunday day, none of us walked away. None of us walked away with it, understand. But as you said, we didn't push back on that. We didn't push back on that. Imam Muhammad even said that when he first started reading the Quran. He said, I didn't understand everything. He said, but I didn't push back on anything. So, that becomes a position or the disposition, I should say, that um, that you should take in, in regards to this platform. We don't need the contention. We, we don't need the contention because there may be nushahadas, there may be people, there may not be Muslims, they may be listening. And, and then now there's confusion. That is, uh, was Eblis an angel for real or this or that? No, we want the clarity there and we should just invite them, that well, maybe this is not the platform for you. You know, I'll stop there.
Yes, sir. Brother, uh, uh, Ismail?
Yes, Assalamualaikum.
Wa alaikum wa sallam.
I, I think that is the problem when you, when you contend, contend with the amount, but then you also say you're a student, it's almost it, it's hard to, they insist that they're a student, but they think they have the ability to contend with what he says. And I, I tell them that without the Imam, you, you wouldn't even have the framework.
That's right.
Yeah. So what makes you think, you know, you can, you can disagree with something without being on that, on the, on having that same, I don't even know how to say, just having the same knowledge base. I, I can, I can understand if you have the same knowledge base, maybe come from a different understanding, but he, the Imam is the one that gave you your knowledge base. So, it, it, it is hard to contend with, but I'll stop there.
It's paradoxical.
You know, that is that rebel, you know, for real. I mean, how, why would call someone your teacher? And you don't submit to what they're teaching. You rebel, you know? Now, we will be confronted with people that have a different opinion. Imam Muhammad said, every human being has been gifted with a rai, rai. And he said, rai means an opinion. And if there is no conclusion to that, we say like the Allah say, like, like the scholars say. Allah who Allah, Allah is the best known. And we move on. And we move on.
Yes, sir. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we, uh, you know, ha- having this conversation, because as you just said, it may come up again in, in one form or another. And if another person giving their honest opinion, I think we should respect that. But, but they cross that line, they cross that line, we gotta be on it. All, and, and we, if we see it as a group, then we should, as it was last week, I said, brother, I said, you're the only ones saying that. And then, and maybe I pushed it too far, cause I, I said, brother, I said, I, I said, I don't think you hear yourself. And, and I will say it again, but saying that aloud, a person will go deep down, he's on defense. Put him on defense, you know, he gonna come out swinging, maybe with his eyes shut, you know, so. And that's, and maybe I shouldn't have done that part, but, so I just want to get some players.
Wa alaikum. I had a, had another Imam from our community. It was another group and it was like mixed. Um, some were students of the Imam and some were new, kinda new, newer. They just came to learn. And, and he was emphasizing that Allah can teach us all individually. And he was emphasizing it in a way that he would teach us things beyond what the Imam gave us. And at one point, another Imam had to check him like, I understand what you're saying technically is true, but don't put that out here that you're able to go beyond what the Imam is teaching, not in this situation. And they kinda had a back and forth. And I, I don't know if it was some type of philosophical disagreement or what. But I agree with the Imam that kinda put him in check, like, don't, don't put that out there like that, cause you know, we're students of the Imam.
Right.
And, and he made the comment, I, well, I'm a doctor this, and, and he said, that doesn't matter. You know, you're still a student.
Yes, sir.
So, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, Alhamdulillah. Okay. All right. I'm glad we had this conversation. It was well worth every minute of it. Okay, let's go with our reading. Let's say page ninety, I had ninety-four, right? No.
Yes, but page ninety-four. Uh.
Yes, yes, right. I seen that table, table talk.
Yes, sir.
Page, page ninety-four. Uh, brother Mark, your hand still up or did you forget to put your hand down?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna put my hand down.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, table talk. Prophet Kevin, and again quoting Surah two, Ayat thirty, where Allah says, I am making a man in the earth. And this time it says, they have man, but in Arabic it says, khalifatah, fil-ati khalifatah. But man, Khalifa said the same thing. Uh, the next subtitle says, Jesus is the second Adam. Then it's the last uh, says, Adam is on the first level of heaven. Jesus on the second level of heaven. Imam Muhammad says, another thing that is important to know about Jesus Christ as Savior is that he is the second Adam. This is the Bible. No, no, that, that is the Bible. Okay, that's the Bible. In Al Islam, he is put on the second level. Adam is on the first level and he, referring to Christ Jesus, is on the second level in the ascent of the spirit or the soul. We're gonna put a mark on that, the ascent of the spirit or the soul. Imam says, Adam is not on earth in that ascent. He is in heaven. All of them are in heaven. You can be on earth where Adam was formed and be buried in the earth and not ascend, even up to Adam. Allah begins the creation of man in the heavens. He says to the angels, quote, I am about to create immortal man and give him charge in the earth. Page ninety-five. Again, uh, a reference to Surah two, Ayat thirty. I am making a khalifa in the earth. Imam says, when God said to the angels, quote, I am, I am about to put a responsible leader in the earth, a khalifa, a human mortal. The angels were disturbed and they said, quote, this will cause bloodshed, end quote. And God said, wait until I have inspired him with my own spirit. Importing my own spirit to him. Then you, you submit. Accept him and make obedience to him, sashta, end quote. These are, are angels, these are angels is addressed. These, these are angels God is addressing. So, what is God saying with that statement? God is saying, quote, I accept that human beings are going to make trouble on earth. And humans do make trouble on the earth. They are not perfect beings like angels to be trusted, to keep the peace and be safe. You cannot trust all human beings with that. But some of these humans are going to qualify for my own spirit. I will inspire them with my own spirit from my own self. Any comments on that? I, I like how Imam was showing us that the, that this ascension, we know it's, it's the prophet, but he's our model. But it's actually, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Praise be to Allah. The Imam is sharing something that's very key here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I heard our teachers say, Imam Wa Sadiq Muhammad, that when we prostrate, we are prostrated to Adam. We are submitted to the original nature. Oh my God, they said, we, we said, well, let, let me make sashta to Allah. Allah needs nothing from us.
Right.
We benefit, we benefit from Salaam and Sashta. So Imam Muhammad said, yes, we turn toward the Kibla.
Mm-hmm.
So, we prostrate. He said, really? You are prospering to the original nature. You are prospering to Adam. Yes, sir. Thank you, my brother.
You know, though, I got two, three thoughts, I'm making, yes. Fast as I can without going too fast. It seems that, well, what you're saying, brother, uh, Kareem has said, Imam Kareem. The same thing that Eblis and the angels were told to bow to, which is really human excellence. We too got to bow to human excellence.
Yes, sir.
And I heard the man say one time that the Kaaba itself, the black cube in Mecca represents human excellence and the black stone stands for the human heart. And it's excellence, in its original nature, that was black. Black meaning original nature. So our bowing is, is uh, not, as you said, not to Allah, but it's to His works and His highest works, if you could say, is to actually a human being. We have to submit to that. Even in our lives. A lot of people have to go to prison before they, they damn to submit to their better selves. You know, sometimes you need more spanking than other child, before they begin to submit to them better selves. But we all willingly or unwillingly have to bow, make prostration to that model of human excellence. This is what I'm, I'm getting from, 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 from this reading and from what you just said, uh, brother Imam Kareem.
Yes.
Um, that's one thought that I come back to and brother Mark's hand up and brother Ismail hands up.
Yeah, yeah, Alhamdulillah. No, um, uh, both of you are hitting the nail right on the head there. And, and I, I just wanted to just add, uh, it, it, he didn't order that uh, surrendering or bowing or acknowledgement until he said, after I breathe into this creation by spirit.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think that's very key in terms of Allah, he has for all of his creations, as a matter of fact, he has in, he has influence all of his creations. And, and particularly um, his human creation. And so, uh, you know, this excellence in human nature is seen after, after Allah breathes into his, some of his rule in that. Uh, so how, how are you gonna improve upon what the Creator has created? He knows it, but you know not, you know, so he knows, that's what he's also saying. Uh, he knows, but you know not. You only know in terms of what it is that you see. And so even going a little bit deeper there, uh, what, uh, the eventually Shaitan saw was not to complete it, was not to be in completion. This is very important to acknowledge, not completed. I'll stop there, but.
Well, you know, now, I mean, brother, with that, we get ready, but uh, read it again, cause it's the first what you just said. It says, God says, wait until I have inspired.
Yes.
Remember my own spirit, importing my own spirit to him, then you submit, says then. Accept to him and make obedience to him. And then also, we have also that when Allah challenged the angels, he said, name these things. And they said, we have no knowledge, except what you gave us. Then he turned to Adam and said, name these things. And Adam, he knew. And, 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 and Adam has been naming them very since, and e- even to this day. Adam has been naming them ever since, e- even to this day. Because that's the equality. Then once it was done, then the angels, they submitted, they bowed, not their beliefs. Brother Ishmael.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I, I have a question about the, the topic, the second one, the topic before this of Jesus, the second Adam.
Yes.
And the Imam, he emphasized Jesus being the second, I would, Adam was from the Bible. He said, "Jesus is the second level." So my question is, following that logic, should we look at Yusuf, it's the third Adam. Uh, Idris is the fourth Adam. That's my question.
Yeah, well, yeah, we, we go to the words of our Prophet. He said, "Every child is born on the pattern of Adam." Yeah, so we, we all, and also, not only that, he said, "We all are Bilal."
Yes.
So, yes, to answer your question, yes, but it was uh because the brothers are, the prophets are all brothers and, and one who does not negate the one that came before him, he just extends or expands from that Adam base. We all have to have Adam members. And when it's also, yes, sir.
Brother Imam Sahir, um, 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 a master key that Imam Muhammad gave to us is this. He said that Muhammad is Adam in his most highest developed mature form.
That's right.
It is Adam in his highest developed, most mature form. And so I think that that really answers the question because uh, you know, you start with Adam. Adam is the beginning, you know, and even if you look at the, many of the things that Imam Muhammad has said in regards to Adam, he, when it comes to the intellect, he said, "Adam represents the dawning of the intellect."
Mm-hmm.
But Ibrahim al-A'isalam, he represents the universal intellect. Uh, and uh also that he uh comes through those stages, but the Prophet came through all of those stages of ascension, the ascension for the soul and the ascension for the intellect. But it starts with Adam. Uh, so this is the travel. So you're absolutely right uh that Muhammad is Adam in his highest, most developed form in maturity.
Yes, sir. They answered the question for our brother Ishmael. Uh, because I think he was following a logic where uh Idris be the third. No, and not, and then uh, not you said the third, and then it, it, Idris be the fourth and so on. And, and, and I, I can see that logic and I can appreciate it. Uh, but I think we should see Adam in, in all of us in this, because Mark has said, the ultimate Adam, or Adam in his completion. Is seen in Muhammad. Is seen in Muhammad, the front picture upon him, yes.
And Hamdulillah, you know, uh, and we hear Allah says, "He is making." The process is not complete yet.
Mm-hmm, right.
And Prophet Muhammad, we pray the prayers and the peace upon him. He is the, he is the completion of that project.
Yes, sir.
He is the Khalifa. Thank you, my brother.
And they go back when the Quran says, "On this day, if I perfected and completed my favors upon you," then that's the end of, that's not the end, but that's the completion of Muhammad.
Allah what?
The Quran is Muhammad. Muhammad is the Quran. Okay, huh? Yes.
That's a good way to put it, brother Imam.
Yes, yes. I mean, now, Aisha said it first.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he says, he said, you know, guys, he said, describe, tell us about Muhammad. She said, "He's the Quran walking." And.
It said that it proceeded with a, a question that she had for the, whoever this man was that was questioning her. And uh, I, I thought, you know, that's very insightful that it, it was reported that she asked him a question, "Do you not read the Quran?"
Hmm, right.
"Do you not read the Quran?" And then she turned around and said, "Well, that's who he is. You, you know, it, it says, "Walk in action," but uh actually living the Quran. You know, if we are following Muhammad the Prophet and we truly follow him, we have to live the Quran.
You know, we, we hear people say, "All I need is the Quran. That's all I need." No, you need the Quran and the example of Prophet Muhammad. In order to true expression of the Quran. You must bring Muhammad with you. And when I say, I mean, his character, his Uswah, his character is honest, his human uh innocence. Bring that with you. You need more than, matter of fact, you know, I heard a lecture once that we look at the Arabian and we say, "This is the Quran." No, it is not. It is the vehicle upon which the Quran is transported.
Right, right. And also, uh, uh, just for our reference, go back to page sixty and sixty-one. I want to take, well, I will read just a portion of it, because it, it's fitting. Uh, we get it on page sixty at the bottom. Says the first Adam, then on page sixty-one, it's the second Adam. I read those two paragraphs. There is sixty, the first Adam. Certainly, he, Adam, did, because that was not his role. His role was not to quicken rational thought. Rational thought was natural in Adam's time. He did not have to quicken it. It was just to go back further. Okay, well, it was then, it was then living. All he had to do was to be an influence on the people to take charge of their environment and build a world livable for human beings. That was the challenge before Adam, referring to the first Adam, just take charge of the environment. Imam Qusay says, "The second Adam mission is to quicken the rational life." The first man, Adam, represents a live rational mind. The second Adam, that Jesus typifies, represents a rational mind that has the ability to quicken the rational progress or rational ability in, in the other lives or minds. Uh, quote, "Oh, you mean to tell me that Adam did not have the ability to quicken that ability in the minds of other people?" End quote. Imam explains, "The challenge before the second Adam is a world that has been deceived, a world that has been made superstitious, ritualistic and irrational. He had to quicken it again. Quicken means to awaken, to start. It is the manifestation of the hidden potential of a human being that God brings out until it reaches its fullness and flowers and full bloom and in full potential. This is the Khalifa, the one that God says should be his custodian." So the first Adam was to take care of the creation. Okay, uh, and, and build a, a world livable for human beings. But when, by the time Jesus came around, man had got off course rituals, symbolism, and all that. So Jesus had to come back and say, "Now, I got to quicken with the first Adam started. I, I gotta give it a re-kick. I gotta give it a restart." And, you know, so just, we just wanted to bring that out. That's on page sixty and sixty-one.
Oh, good point. Yeah, very good point.
Hamdulillah. Mm-hmm. So, Hamdulillah, Hamdulillah. Okay. But the reading we hit, hit on page uh the ninety-four, I'll come back up.
Yes.
Five.
Yes. Uh, now we, also, uh, well, also, we began on ninety-four. I had another point I was gonna make.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think we, and we may have said it, that, that, that is the human soul that is ascending. Yes, yes, uh. So say, "Allah begins the creation of man in the heavens." That's our Father, right? Yeah, Adam, yes. But gave us, gave him charge in the earth. All right, but maybe, maybe it's nothing there. Okay. We on page ninety-five now?
Yes, sir. God's two hands.
God's two hands are, are the world of natural things and the other hand is revelation. As Imam says, "And when that happens, angels, and when that happens, angels, you have to submit to my creation, my man." Let me go back a bit. He, he, uh, Imam was saying that, "But some of these humans are going to qualify for my own spirit. I will inspire them from my own spirit, from my own self. And when that happens, angels, you have to submit to my creation, my man, as I created him." Then God said, "What is wrong with you that you do not submit to the man that I have made with my two hands?" Meaning his two major controls. The world of natural things, that is one of God's controls. And the other control is revelation. Okay, that nature and revelation, okay. Imam says, "The man that I made with revelation, I made human with the natural world. They are supposed, they, they are supported by my natural creation. But I am also thinking this particular man with my words, with revelation." Allah is saying, "What is wrong with you, Satan, that you do not accept this man, this creature, this Khalifa that I am making with my two controls? Metaphorically, it is my two hands, but it means my two controls. And it means that now, and, and it means that now, in common language, we say, 'Handle him, man. Do not let him handle you.' So we thank God. And Hamdulillah. So the two controls, the two hands of God that he used uh in, let me see, I'm getting, because I'm saying it right. Uh, yeah, that he used to, to, to create us. Well, so, the, the, the control of nature and the, the control of his word or revelation.
Yes.
Okay.
Brother Imam.
Yes, sir.
Very, very important point Imam Muhammad is bringing out to us. Um, and this goes, this takes us back to Al Fatihah in the first ayah.
Okay.
Bismillah ar-Rahman ar-Rahim. The connection here is that the first mercy is that Allah is the most merciful benefactor. And Imam Muhammad has stated, "You find that mercy in the natural world, the natural creation that he made and also in man, but especially in the human creation in terms of how he created him, very unique from the rest of creation um, and actually giving him an intellect." Imam said, "Free will, a free will, the capacity to absorb knowledge which you don't find anything else in creation, which it has that capacity."
Right.
And then he also went so far to say that this also represents the Nafs, the human soul. We know we have things that can be seen, things that can't be seen, but this is Allah's creation. Uh, you see, and then he said, "Our Rahim, the most merciful Redeemer, this um says that when man goes wrong or get off of the path or is lost, then this mercy is extended to him, our, our Ra, I mean Ra, Rahim."
Rahim, yes, sir.
Or Redeemer, and he said, "He redeems man."
Mm-hmm.
Or he saves man with revelation.
The word, that, mm-hmm.
And in the process of that, it also eliminates or eradicates the misnomer that a flesh and blood man had to sacrifice his life and shed his blood to redeem man or save man. He said that Allah has always utilized that from the very beginning, as with Adam. He was redeemed when he prayed from his Lord. I, I, I could say more, but I'll stop there, but um.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, these two are, are actually together in the first ayah of Al Fatihah. And then we know Surah fifty-five where Allah says, "Al-Rahman, Al-Lama, Quran, Kalaka, and San Adam, Ahuma, Bayan." That the most merciful benefactor, he taught the Quran and he created the human being and he taught him intelligent, clear speech. This goes again in terms of support, what, what Imam Muhammad is actually giving to us in the creation of the human being. You cannot be a co- a complete human being if Allah had for us to be a creative purpose without having also patience. I'll stop there. Thank you.
He said, yeah, yeah, just to uh make sure I followed you correctly. You, you are correlating the two hands, one hand being Rakhman. That's the natural, the natural creation, the other hand being that is to, to, with God.
That's right. The guidance, yeah, the guidance comes to man when he loses his way. This is the creation for the human being, yes. Al-Rahman being that of the natural world. Al-Rahim being that of uh guided scripture.
Okay, good. I'm gonna make sure that I followed you correctly. Yes, sir. Thank you. Very good. Excellent, excellent. Put your hand down, please. Brother, uh, Ishmael?
Yes, sir. Uh, I, I have a question and, and I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm, I'm certainly Imam said that, said this. And, and, and of course we say, Allah created Adam with his two hands. But I think someone said both hands before and he said, "Be careful, don't change two to both." Does anyone remember any of that or have any insight on that? Because you can't interchange those two. Don't change the word two. Don't use both instead of two. I don't, I don't.
Well, so what's the rationale for using one over the other?
That, that's why I was trying to, I couldn't remember the rationale is why we need to stick with the two hands as compared to saying Allah made Adam with both hands. It was, it was, it was a nuance to it. And I may have to try to, I may have to try to, try to uh research that, but I just want to ask the class just in case.
Mm-hmm. Personally, I don't see any distinction, but anybody else?
No, I don't see any distinction there, but I think that um when you say two, it puts the um, the emphasis on both, uh, on both uh the natural creation which is uh as um Imam Muhammad has referred to that as the big book. He said that this natural creation preceded revelation. So, so the big book is the natural creation. This is, this is the, the, the universe in terms of natural world or natural creation that Allah is teaching, so when he said evolving the human being means that Allah is the first teacher. He's, he is the first teacher and he's teaching them from the big book, the natural creation. And then, you understand, he begins to teach him with revelation because he's gonna make mistakes. He's gonna lose his way. He's gonna go off the course. So I think if we look at it like that. So I think if we look at it like that, in, in terms of two, is need, uh, 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 Imam Muhammad saying that that is neither necessary, this is how he creates the man. The man is just not only just a physical creature, there's other components uh, to the, the human being that has to evolve to what Allah intended uh, for the creator, for the human being. So it's both in that regard. But I think when you say two, okay, it's like one, two, okay, this is one, okay, now what's two? And what does two do? Two takes you back to number one, takes you back to Al-Raqman.
Smil al-Raqman Rahim, Imam, the Lasing Melvin, Florida.
Yes, sir. No, I had to get used to you, you signing with your wife's name.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Uh, just wanted to make a contribution to the two, to follow the logic. To, right, and, uh, what he, what Ishmael mentioned is very important in sense, in the sense of seeing it like two, two mercies, two mercies, Al-Raqman, Al-Rahim, two mercies. And, uh, then just, just in that second mercy, uh, we were talking about the natural, man has to return to the, to his, uh, to his natural, to the natural world. Al-Rahim also is, i- is, uh, given in terms of referencing the wounds and family, et cetera. And, uh, and the, the womb, Al-Rah, Al, Al-Rahim is, uh, is, uh, from, taken from, the word wound is taken also from that same root.
Yeah.
And that, that, that gives, that gives life and, uh, creates an environment for growth and, uh, productivity, et cetera. But, uh, the two is important. And, you know, and when you look at it in terms of its logical co, connections, that if you say both, that, that, that could be both of anything. Uh, could be, you could even multiply that really in different respects. But now we are talking about two mercies and, uh, two hands, et cetera. So that man was pointing out that, that two has connections in that regard. That's, that's what I would share on that.
Yes, sir. And I think to keep in mind what Imam says, planning, he said, uh, he said, two hands, but it means my two controls, the word control.
Yes.
He had to bring that back, I think, into conversations, sister.
And let me just add, let me just add one other thing on this thought pattern we have here. Uh, you know, and also the, the nature of things. The nature of things come in pairs, in pairs. The nature of things comes in pairs.
Yeah, now, now that word is saying, Sally Jane, finally we get Zo, like Zo from your husband or your wife. When it's, it's in pairs, but we remember emphasized here is control, handle, handle of control. Yeah, I think.
I'm, I'm just making the connection with two now, just the two. Yes, just looking at it from two. And then brought up two, cause the question I think Ishmael mentioned was, Ma'am said to be careful to not say both, say two, right?
Right.
That's where I'm connecting.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, sister Martha.
Yes, and greetings, peace to everyone. Uh, and what, what, um, I'm reflecting on and, and thinking logic here, uh, two, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is the originator of the process, of those mercies and of the two. That Allah is the, uh, you say, in control, the controller. Both would imply that there's another originator of the, of the two, but you say both is, is like, okay, I have both of mine. Well, who create, who originated the process of having two? And so that I can just see it where both would just imply that there's something else that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala got the hands from or got, not hands, but you understand the controlling.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Um, also, what came to my mind from reading this, the two controls, Allah says, they belong to him, you know? And Allah is not sharing these with nobody else, but his.
Right.
Uh, so now the two controls, you know, you know, test right here, one is nature and one is revelation. And it reminds me of Shaitan's words that is giving us, that Allah uses to give us the important message. Satan said, I'm gonna hit him from four directions. But it doesn't include these two. Satan said, the left, the right, before them, behind them. But he don't say anything about on top of them or beneath them. Cause those are Allah's controls. As long as we remain in contact with those controls, beneath us is the first one, nature. Above us is the second control, the word of revelation. Satan cannot attack us from those two, impossible. Impossible. I don't think what Satan can do is that after we get it, he may try and come in there and try to reinterpret it or redefine it or well, try and put mud on our eyes or whatever, but he cannot. Those are Allah's controls and Allah is not sharing those controls.
Yes.
And it don't, it doesn't change. As long as we keep on, hold of those two. And I think that was the salvation, I, I know it is now, I said, that was the salvation of African Americans enduring, I don't, since slavery. We never let go of those two. What, what, what they say in the Quran, says Islam is a handheldish, you should never let go of it, you never let go of you. I, I could be going through slavery, never let go of those two controls, never let go. And he, and, and now, now we can stand up.
That's excellent observation, uh, Imam Sahir, uh, on your part, you know? Um, it, because you just gave the Quran in terms of Shaitan being an avowed enemy and in terms of what he said that he was going to do, uh, you know, with this respect. Um, but above and below, above and below. He has no control over that. This goes back to Al-Raqman and Al-Rahim, that the two that I, I have, yes, thank you. That's very good, excellent.
Imam Michael, you know?
Yes, sir.
Allah lets us know that he created the creation in pairs, in pairs.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we are, and it requires revelation to identify what is Maruq and what is Monqar.
Mm-hmm.
That we just accept it and that we just reject. We, we, in the Quran, Allah tells us to seek refuge with Allah of the mischief of created things. And I was asked a question once. Brother Imam, what, what does Allah mean when he says the mischief of created things? When those things are not utilized for the purpose and the benefit?
Yes.
You know, so Allah reveals to us, we don't have to, he reveals to us what is good and what is bad. And the proper usage of this creation. It is created on two, in pairs there, and for everything that Allah has created, he said, there is a benefit and there is a harm. I stopped right now.
Yes, yes, the benefit is called Kaya. Kaya.
Yes, sir.
Ka, Karun. And the word Kaya means is good and also good for you.
Yeah, you broke up there, brother. I'm sorry, repeat that again.
Yes, I think, thank you. Kaya means is good, but also is good for you. Kaya means is good no matter where on the planet. It is huge, it's a universal good.
Maruq.
And Kaya also means is not limited to one gen, it's only, it's not limited to one generation. It's always, was good, always will be good. Okay, so that's Kaya. But the evil is called Shah. Shah. Shah mainly is harmful and it hurts. And it's going against the, the will of God, his uh, Qadr, Q A D R. And when you go against the Qadr, the Shah which is latent in all creation, will come out and spank us. Cause she's going against the intent. But if you go, if you go, take that same thing, I always use the example of alcohol. You should drink it and you get the Shah. To use it in medicine, at a barbershop, you get the Kaya, right? Um, and so, uh, the, the last two verses of the Quran, man is to one thirteen, you know? Is, 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 the next, the next, this is the Shah this, the Shah that, it, it goes on. So, uh, if we keep within those two controls and, and respect those two controls, no matter how Satan come to us, cause he's coming from before, behind, left to right. Then when we see creation, we approach it correctly, naturally, the Kaya is gonna come and bless us with it. And you're gonna know if they, we using this correctly. If she approached you wrongfully, you're gonna get water pollution, you're gonna get air pollution, you're gonna get humid pollution and get all kind of pollutions because you approached it incorrectly. And the first time we do it incorrectly, it's gonna hurt, it's gonna stink. It's gonna hu- hurt us. If, if you go back, uh, and before we became Muslim, okay, at that point, right? Your, your, your first cigarette, not the tenth, not the hundredth, but your first cigarette, the Shah came out. You choked, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you gag, you, you, you're not your tenth or your hundredth, but your first shot of whiskey, it burnt the mouth. The Shah, burnt the throat, that Shah. Went to the stomach, you got sick, you vomited, make you recalling, you said he was calling Earl, right? Remember that phrase, he was calling Earl, right? Yeah, he throwing up. That's the Shah. Now, if you disregard all those warnings and you say, I'm gonna do it anyway, well, then you're gonna get, will come with it. But you say, you know what, if I can take those, those same things and I can use those, uh, same items in a good way, then naturally by Allah's Qadr, the Kaya is gonna come out and bless us. It's a, a hundred blah. Yeah, the Kaya, the Kaya and the Shah, it goes back to Allah's Qadr. It, it, cause in Allah's Qadr, he has already put the intent for whatever it is, be a tree, be a mosquito, be a whatever. You know, water bug, be a fish in the sea, be a, be a you, Allah gave us a Qadr. That was his decree. And he, his decree got the final say so in the end. Now along the way, we, we, we can play games, but if we want to, but the Shah will spank us every time. Every, not, every time, and the first spanking feel like, very easy, you know? But you keep on messing with it. Yeah, so, alhamdulillah.
It intensifies.
With both ways, I mean, even with the Kaya, it wouldn't justify.
Yes, yes, both ways.
Yes, sir.
Yes, very good, excellent.
Alhamdulillah.
Two, as, uh, excellent examples, uh, too, a- and that goes to like even, uh, when, uh, Allah is speaking about wine and gambling.
Yes.
First in terms of, uh, revelation, in terms of, is, is some good, but the harm outweighs the good. That's an example, mm-hmm, yeah.
Alhamdulillah. Okay, where we start, we go to, uh, God's word carries spirit and influence. That's the last paragraph on page ninety-five. Imam says, I am in support of us building our community up from the ground. But I know that I wouldn't be here today. You would not know me if God had not begun making a man. A special man in the United States of America, in the family of the African American people. And I know whatever we are going to do, we can do it much better if we begin by recognizing our reality in its best condition. Is the reality given to us by God's word. The reality created by God's word. And the word carries spirit. Every word carries spirit or influence. I can say net, no, th- that's G N A T, net, like the little bitty bug, the flying bug, right? I can say net, and already I have influenced your mind and also your soul. The word net, you heard it, if I say trash. It influences your mind and also your soul. How it influences them is a question of where your mind is. So the word carries a spirit and the influence, both. But, and I'm on the next page, go further with it. Okay, but my mind is still back on what he says. If God had not begun making a man, a special man in the United States of America, in the family of the African American people. Any comments on that? Is he referring to himself? They don't sound such a manner.
Alhamdulillah, you know, it, um, it gives me a different understanding of, uh, you know, the, the, when we look at, when we looked at the controls and us evolving as African Americans here in this country, you know? We were not broken because we were safe in Allah's control of, of the natural things. The, 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 the two controls, one natural, one revelation. So we were safe in the two controls of the natural things. Uh, in this country, the natural things. And George Washington Carver, as you said, is an example of that. Studied nature, studied, uh, creation, that he talked to the plants, the natural things. He found Allah's guidance in the natural creation. And our ancestors found Allah's guidance as well and Allah's mercy and understanding the natural human being as to what was right and what was wrong and what was unacceptable. And, uh, that people were off course on their humanity. You know, by having an understanding of the natural creation. And we also had understanding of the Holy Quran, uh, because there were Muslims that were brought here. Uh, because the church forbided them to enslave the Christian, uh, the Christians of Africa. So Muslims and, uh, tribal, uh, Africans that were brought here, uh, to be enslaved. So we had, uh, a understanding of the Holy Quran as well. So these, uh, helped us operate in a level that the occasions, those, uh, enslaving us didn't understand.
Right.
They couldn't grasp it. Because they weren't seated in that. So alhamdulillah, this, this gives me, uh, uh, another insight.
Yes, ma'am.
A different insight into how we evolved uh, as African Americans in this country, in our faith and, and our worship, keeping our sanity. And, and, and patiently persevering until, you know, Allah brought us
Right.
out of that situation.
Yes.
So this, this is very helpful to me in my understanding.
Well, and, and you're sharing how it helped you, it's helping us. We are, we are free from each other because as she was speaking, your boy gave, gave birth to new thousands in my mind. One, one is, uh, as enslavement, we kept in contact with the firsthand. We never lost our natural selves. After freedom from slavery and with the coming of this, and we, we may also, uh, making of a special man in America, in the African American family, Adam is being made again. That's what I'm saying. The work is being repeated, and now it's, it's our turn, so to speak. And so now the second control, a revelation, the word is now being, being given to us. You may, because if we said at the beginning, "I am in support of building this community up from the ground," what is the ground? That's nature. That's under our feet. That's the first control. But then he said, then Allah began making a man. Okay? And then making that man was made by the word, because he, he, he may also says the words. And, uh, the, the word of God, that's the second control. Is that making sense to everybody?
Yes, yes, it makes sense to me because, you know, it, it says in, in the text that, uh, my two hands, uh, meaning the two major controls. So Allah has many controls.
Right.
But he's referring to the two major controls. And these two major controls, the natural things and revelation. You know, we, we never strayed from the natural things.
With the making, making of this man in America, in the African American family, is being made with the word, the word.
Words make people.
And so, there's going to come a time when, when Allah has made up with his two controls.
Yes.
Nature and the word. And the man says here, I read it again, he said, "But I know that I wouldn't be here to, here to, today." "You would not know me if God had not begun making a man, a special man in the, in the United States of America, in the family of the African American people." Now, he not saying it's, it's him, but it, it is, it's Imam Muhammad. That's the avenue, that's the pathway of the word coming to a teacher, to a people, I'm sorry, who never lost touch with their original nature.
This, uh, this, this helps me understand also why the fear that people have of the unfound fear that people have of African Americans and African American men in particular. You know, they don't understand how, how, how you weren't totally broken, how you were able to endure, how you were able to survive this, how you not, how you were not totally subdued, okay? Uh, they can't, they can't grasp it, and they have a fear of the unknown of what they can't grasp, so.
No, they have, they have a fear that they're going to have to bow and make a beast.
Well, that too, but they, they have a fear, they, 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 they can't grasp it, it's a seal, it's a seal there, you know? Uh, for those who hold on to that thinking, some have evolved, many have evolved. You know, but as we see, uh, what's going on now, many have not, you know, but and they, they, they believe their only option is to totally wipe us out and eradicate us. You know, so alhamdulillah, this is a great insight.
For, for, you know, they all saying, we don't die, we multiply. I saw three hands up, now I see two hands up. But Sister Martha, Martha, when you go first, please.
Oh, okay, and I pray you can hear me okay because my, my wifi is acting up. Okay, I, I, I want to inject, as you was, I was trying to keep my thought here of the, um, the Imam speaking of, of that which is a repetition, the word repetition, uh, that newborns, babies are born every day. And, uh, and in reading, we come to understand Allah's pronouncing words, the message is embodied in the words. And what Allah's messages that we're to serve, the greater, a reason that we're here, and but it happens through being in service to humanity. So I can see where the man was referring to, uh, uh, African American in the, the, the family of African Americans, understanding it from a human perspective that, uh, that the words that encased us like a caged bird. The, the, the caged bird effect is upon us by the words that we, we absorb. And so we have to, uh, under, and, and I say we have to, no. In releasing ourselves from those words that cage us in, so that we're not doing the, 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 the harm to ourselves that others put upon us, but they came back with words. Poor, three fifths of a human being. And we can see where that three fifths is applicable because we've absorbed it and we're incorporating it in our process. So the newborn babies are just like that Adam repeated all over again to be, to hear the word and to then grow up as a plant and, and be productive. I'll stop right there.
Yes, ma'am, yes. Well, we all are of a language environment. And they put us in a, as she was saying, like a cage word environment. It was to contain us. But we going to be in a word environment also, but our word environment is the Quran that frees us. So thank you very much, Sister Martha. I see a hand up from seven, two, seven, have you called?
And we see that, uh, in that last world, that he, you know, he, he, he's always growing and developing in us, one phase after another. Simply, we were brought into existence, and that process, that process of being brought into existence automatically started to bring you into establishment. So we come from being brought here and to evolve into our establishment. So praise be to Allah for that process that he has, has us under. So alhamdulillah. So no matter what happened, whatever happened between you, that, 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 that process, we thankful to Allah that we are here now, doing what we have to do to serve humanity. So we thankful to Allah for our existence, our enduring, and whatever it is that our experience of our ancestors and genetic thing that we have in us from them, and our experiences together, all that bring us into right now, into what? Into our establishment. So praise be to Allah that we can, we continue on, on the road to establishment.
If I can make one more comment, you know, uh, uh, um, um, in that last, uh, sentence of the first paragraph, Allah says that, of these humans are going to qualify from my own spirit. But some of these humans are going to qualify for my own spirit, and I will inspire them from my own spirit, from my own self, alhamdulillah. You know, many times, uh, babies, you know, our, our, our parents used to say, oh, this child's been here before. You know, because you see something in that child where they are, uh, 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 have a, uh, understanding, or they have, uh, 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 I won't say knowledge or wisdom, uh, that at an early age, you see something special in some of the babies. So you see them advancing or advanced beyond their stage of development. Uh, so when we look at it in the proper context, you know, that is what Allah has, 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 has blessed them with by giving them. Uh, and Allah says he breathes into the, uh, us of his rule in the womb. This is a gift from, that Allah has given them in the wombs, uh, for their, to prepare them for this life, or for their role in this life. So it's, when we look at it in that way, in the spiritual context, we see the importance of protecting the children in a whole different, on a whole different level. You know, and, and protecting those gifts of what we see, or the areas that we see they're advanced in, and in a whole different level, you see, you know, how we uh, monitor their exposure to, to, to negativity or things that take them away from natural things and revelation. You know, and we protect them and, uh, facilitate their growth and development and what Allah has already put into them. So it really makes a whole different alignment of even parenting and, 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 and raising children. You know, when we look at it, and when we have the correct understanding. I wish I had known this. I wish I had known this. Uh, you know, years and years ago, when I were raised, when I was raising children, because it, uh, you know, I did the best I could with what I had at the time, alhamdulillah, you know? But, yeah, but it, uh, it, it, it really, it really shows a direct, a direct connection with Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, and how Allah, Allah said he turns each of us to a goal, how Allah i- i- is equipping the human being from the beginning, from the onset, in the womb. For, for whatever goal he will turn them to, or turn us to. So all praises due to Allah. You know, this is, uh, this is something that should be, uh, talked about in a parenting class, Brother Mark, if you're still doing a parenting class. Alhamdulillah, it's, uh, uh, it's just, it's just.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just kind of full right now, alhamdulillah.
Alhamdulillah. Well, you know, now, keeping, thank you very much for that, and thank you for that reminder. But we also, when you say womb, W O O M B, and what Allah had put into us in, in, in the womb. And, and I think that's also the, you know, that's the, the smaller womb of the mother, of the physical body. But the, when the child is delivered, it's, it's delivered into a bigger womb called mother earth now, or creation. And we still have to go through that same process again, but on a more wider, uh, level, or a bigger level, because the process is continuous, is continuous. And we still have to be very protective of the word environment now. The womb is not just a physical womb, that's the beginning. But the bigger womb, or maybe the more important womb, you can call it community life in our community. But it, it begins, let's go before that, even in the physical household, there are certain standards. Now, we don't do that here. We don't, you know, mind your manners, share your, share this, share that. There's also a womb as well. The, uh, schoolhouse that we go to is, is a womb. That's, that's why they call our schools alma mater. Mater is saying mother. And a mother has a womb, but this womb has a womb for education. The church or the mosque is another womb. And, and in each of these envi- environments, we have to be very dutiful, vigilant on protecting the words in all of these environments, all these wombs. Sister Nali was saying before about the, they put us in a cage. Well, that cage was, uh, uh, is also words, but they call us niggers and whatever else, spooks, no goods, and all that. But, so we had to come out of that negative cage of slavery and genpro, and it's still a problem for us today. So the idea of a womb is saying a place of confinement that's full of nourishments and protein, proteins and everything to evolve you to a certain stage before it will put you out. The physical baby is nine months. The child in the home, eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old, time for you to go. All right, it's, it's, and, and life goes like that, but that allows you to grow, because you have outgrown that womb. So alhamdulillah, it's funny you mention that. And our development as an African American people, uh, Imam Muhammad, going back, he was saying here that he said he's in support of us building our community up from the ground. But what I'm connecting with what Sister, uh, Anira was just saying, was that that womb and, and now, it, it, and, and, uh, and the words that are allowed to be in that womb, in this case here, our community, you have to be very protective and very mindful of those words. Brother Bilal, your hands up?
Yeah, alhamdulillah, you know, this is, uh, this is, this is a progress, this is the progress for the human being.
Yes, sir.
Getting knowledge, being conscious of life, the human life, this is natural, and then acting on it. And be, and be constantly in that process, you know, be, being able to, to get the knowledge and reflect on it. And so be constantly in that process.
Alaykum salam, yes. So let's get us to our next point, with what we're saying. Um, Imam is saying, with the part saying the words, God's word carries spirit and influence, God's word. And then he talked about us, or the banking, and was for building our life, our, our, uh, our, our community. But then the next part, he says, uh, on page ninety-six, he, he introduces America, the beautiful. He says, "There are some of you around this blessed country, the United States, that are blessed and cursed with, with bad leaders. Blessed because of the good leaders making contributions to the building of a special people called Americans. And cursed because of bad leaders in America, the beautiful, the, the, eh, yeah, you know, I'm probably, because, because of, of the, of bad leaders in America, the beautiful and America the ugly. All mixed in together. Now, I am for America the beautiful, and I hope that I am a factor in preserving and promoting America the beautiful." Who remember, I know, I, I, I sure you do, the book, As the Light Shining From the East. And there was a chapter in that book titled, "America the Beauty and America the Beast." Do y'all remember that chapter? Of the book?
I remember the book and the chapter, but I can't remember the total content to respond on it.
No, no, it's, it's pretty much what it, it's saying here, that America, No, no, it's, it's pretty much what it, it's saying here, that America, Imam Muhammad was giving us a balance of reality. And we got to make choices. Cause there's, those Satan got us the, as many rights as we do here in America. You know, they can sell alcohol, beer, fornication, anything else. So those are bad leaders here. Imam said, all mixed in together. So Imam Muhammad was saying that he wants to be a factor in preserving and promoting America the beautiful. And th- this is our home and I think we want to do, do the same thing. America the beautiful. But Imam, Imam, he has had many thoughts, reflections on what the Imam is important to us, but, but he, he is sharing with us here. Because they're good leaders and they're bad leaders. Go ahead, sister Ania.
I think in this day and time, now we, we are seeing the ugly, not just in America, but in, in, in the world. And, uh, it's right on the front page, uh, so we can really see how ugly it is and how ugly it can, it can be. Uh, and is, is, is prompting a surge in humanity and, uh, uh, and the goodness of humanity. Uh, you, you know, the shock of it, you know, is, 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 is very shocking. How, uh, distorted people can be in, 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 in the human reality. It's, it's, uh, you know, you can't wrap your mind around it. It's like, how in the world, you know, could, 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 could you even? You know, do, how in the world could you even go there? You know, it, it, and so but through all of this, Allah brings about good, you know, the fact that, uh, people are becoming more conscious and, and humanity is searching for the goodness and looking to support the goodness and, and striving hard for the goodness. So this is, this is our work. And, uh, the process is that we have to follow. So, inshallah, you know, we, we, we see what areas we have to really support and work in.
Yes, as you were speaking, I thought the negativity sometimes brings out the better in the good people. Cause sometimes with people, we, we, we tend to go to sleep, but we get relaxed. You know, cause they're feeling going, going good. But then we get, we get a cold bucket of water in our face and the bad leaders take advantage of us being relaxed. Brother Ismail?
Yes, sir. A lot, a lot of things going through my mind too. You, you was thinking of that book. They just, just two quick comments. I know, uh, the east, the east represents the dawn of consciousness.
Yes.
And, and right now, our leadership is very destroying the east wing of our white house. So, so, so those kind of things go through my head and we're talking about, you know, America the beautiful, America the ugly.
Yeah.
And those are the things that come through, you know, you know, we, we, we were blessed to think a little bit differently. And, 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 and just, just to look at things differently and I'll stop there.
Alhamdulillah. Well, and you, 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 you opened a whole conversation there, I thought. Yeah, they're going to demolish the east wing. Yeah, oh my goodness, you got my wheels turning now, cause they trying to get rid of, of, uh, D E I and CRT and all that. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to chill in there for a while. Yes, sir, brother Bilal.
Yeah, alhamdulillah. You know, the, um, that the time basically is here now that everything is so evident in the society. And you can see the real truth of God and his life and his purpose. And it's so accessible to everybody that really the light is on and people can see everything. And see man, he had that point where man can, if, if, if man can stop evolving, because why God take over and make his logic so clear that everybody really can see what's going on. And I, and I think right now, it's becoming very, very clear about what's going on in government throughout the world, that the masses begin that they can see, because they why? Because they out there protesting, they protesting for their human rights. So praise be to Allah.
Alhamdulillah, yeah, for their human rights and their, their civil rights, their civil rights. Yeah, yeah. And when you're fighting for your civil rights, though it's not uh, physical with bombs and bullets, if you're fighting for your civil rights, you're in a civil war. And you, you hear a lot of that talk in the media. It, so we're not in a physical civil war. But we are in a, in a civil war right now. I remember years ago, Imam, he talked about, he gave us an understanding of the concept of Star Wars, cause it was, the movies came out, Star Wars one and all that. And Imam was saying, what does he was, he said, they were sending a message to society. That World War One was more of a physical war, some material game. World War Two was more of a mental war. And World War Three is Star Wars, other, otherwise it's gonna be above our heads. It's gonna be in the heavens. It's gonna be for the soul, it's gonna be for the spirit. And so we're faced with that right now, if we, we can see it. We, I would just hold on to what, as we, what gave us success and surviving before. It's the same thing would give us success and allow us to survive now and to strive. And we keep to the word of God, we keep to the life of Muhammad, Muhammad the Prophet. And as students of Imam Muhammad, we keep to his teachings and they can't touch us, they can't touch us. As a matter of fact, the wise in the world will, will, will protect us. Cause they, they know us. They know Imam Muhammad's teachings and know who followed his teachings. Okay, so Imam says, now I am for America the beautiful. So what's that telling us as his students, that we should be for America the beautiful? And he says, I hope I am a factor in preserving and promoting America the beautiful. So they're telling us that there's the work for us to do and that we have to be, I, I think brother Imam Karim mentioned before. That's the, uh, Mar roof. And that's the moon car. The Mar roof. And this part, in this particular aspect, is the beautiful America. The moon car in this part of the conversation is the cursed part, the bad part of America. So we have to follow our leader. And he said he wanted to support the best of good of America and we have to be the same way. Okay, let's go to the next portion. What time we got? Nine oh one? Okay, we make this up, it'll be our last. Our last portion. It's titled, Language Makes People. Imam says, I said a long time ago, before I was called the Imam, I think I was still called Chief Minister. Quote, words make people, end quote. And it means language makes people. The language on the street, if the youngsters accept it, it makes the street people. It makes youngsters of the streets. And if one is fortunate to be in a congregation that recognizes the Lord, God over all things, then the scripture communicated to you made those people. The scripture communi- made it to you, made those people, okay? The scripture communicated by those people to their congregation or to each other makes them and you, makes them and you can tell them when you see them. Especially the believers, okay? Oh, that's interesting. He makes a distinction, especially the believers. You do not have to be a believer in their religion. Just be a true believer and you will recognize a believer. Whether it is Christian, Jew, Buddhist, even Hindu or Sapiens. Those outside of the people of the book, but that we identify them as Muslims, Christians and Jews. Some think it is only Muslims, Jews and Christians. No, when Allah says, quote, people of the book, end quote, he is also talking about the Sapiens. And they still exist. I thought they did not exist anymore, but I found out about four or five years ago, there are still practicing believers on this planet earth called Sapiens. When you are around them and you have a chance to converse with them or share in the conversation with them, you feel a believer. And after a while, you forget the religious label identity and you are just happy to be with another believer and you feel good in their company. What it does is support the belief that I have been focusing on. The belief that I am focusing on is that God's word creates the people he wants on this earth. Okay. Any, any comments, reflections?
Oh, go ahead. I'll go after this one.
Yes.
Okay, and, and I promise I'll be quick. Alhamdulillah, back to the message. Um, and, and, and I reference now, I'm saying, wow, it took seventy years. Not exactly, but to be in the li- in this tenth dimension of my, you know, growth and to say, wow, we don't have to categorize. We have to, we can apply our spiritual intelligence or our natural intelligence and then the revelation that, that the message brings and then spend that message, spend it. Don't hold back on it just because we see something, it's for me, see certain people in certain conditions.
Yeah, I mean, sure, you say spend, you mean S V E N D.
Yes, yes, use it.
I, I should give you my like spin, like S P I N, I said.
Oh, thank you, Imam, I seen that. That's a right of right, right? Exactly. And, and, and to use, use what we've come to know, not as though it is mine for my sake, but it is an inheritance for those whom Allah has won all the sins in our midst or I'm being placed in others' midst. So I stop right there.
Alhamdulillah, yeah, spend on it. Yeah, yes, good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, yes, sir. What, what came to my mind? Was that, um, we, just because someone may label themselves a Hindu or a Buddhist, we should listen to, listen to them. And you may find out that they may be a believer. So we, we may not have to put labels on people. We would look at their actions and look at how they carry themselves. That's what I got from what Imam was saying.
Yeah, yeah, I get, cause he says here, in the second, in the first paragraph, he says, scripture communicated to you made those people. The scripture communicated by those people to the congregation or to each other makes them and you. And ma- makes them and you can tell them when you see them. Then he says, especially the believers. He makes a distinction, everybody in your congregation, church in your mosque is there. But there's a certain quality that raised him to a higher status of being a believer. And he said, uh, the, a believer, you found it in every, in many groups. Muslims, Christians, Jews, Sapiens, Hindus. And so I think that's what you were saying, right, brother, that you can see that belief, it, it's universal. It's not limited to a title. Yes. Thank you. Brother Bilal.
Yeah, alhamdulillah. Um, and this day and time is really, uh, I'll put it like this. Imam Muhammad said that he never lost his spirit to, uh, to sacrifice. He said he can, he very comfortable with having little or nothing. But he said he had to sacrifice and the sacrifice had to be for something. And what, what it came to my mind, I would listen to, um, Sister Nala last night. And they have a situation where money is needed to, to deal with a, a problem that we having with, uh, concerning C W S C and they're constantly, and it'd be AM three sixty-two as the company under the, the parent company. And I, I think that I would love for her to bring that forward sometime, so we can understand it and we, and we put out some money and get that situation taken care of, so we can be comfortable in what we have to do on this, uh, on this program. That, that we own, you know, that we have been blessed to have. I wanted to kind of like put that out there also.
Okay, well, that was not familiar with any kind of, uh, financial difficulties, so.
Yeah. Alhamdulillah. Yes, the, 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 uh, you know, this is, this is happened to me quite a bit where you, uh, are around someone of a, of a different denomination and, uh, you connect as believers. Uh, but while I sold Encyclopedia Britannica and, uh, and talking to, uh, one of the people that I was trying to, to make the pitch to, we start talking about religion and, uh, so I let them know, well, I'm a Muslim and, and they told me, it don't matter. I knew, I knew you were a believer when we start talking. You know, I, I, and, uh, but even before we start talking, I found that the, uh, peace, uh, the, and, and, and the calm in being around another believer. That lets you know, that's the indication that you are, uh, are around a believer. You know, cause another believer brings you some peace and calm and tranquility uh, in your soul, that helps you settle, especially if you're in an environment where it's kind of anxious. Uh, or a lot going on. And, uh, you have that experience and you connect with another believer in that environment and it's, uh, strengthening and fortifying to, to the soul. You know, to, to, for that to happen. So I've, uh, had that experience quite a bit, even on, on the job. You know, at first you kind of, people, you kind of, people kind of put you off because you're a Muslim and you dress a different way and everything, but when stuff hits the fan, they come and sit right next to you. And make a comment like, how are these people trying to do this without God? Without God in the mix. So you, 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 you make those connections. So alhamdulillah.
I, I never was in the military, but that's a phrase that I heard said, maybe somebody could help me out with it. But when you're in the foxhole and you, and you being shot at, you know, you ain't got time for no ridiculous debate. Cause you all being, uh, shot at, you know, so as young guys say, the bullets don't have names on them. So you all get together and come to a consensus real quick, on how we all going to survive in this foxhole. Uh, see about nine twelve, uh, any other observations about this here? And also looking at the progression of this, uh, of, of our reading. I see Brown, he, uh, talks about uh, Adam and Kalifa, but then he brings it home to us as Americans and African-Americans in the making of a man. Then after doing that, Then after doing that, it transcends to us looking at. America, the country. So Adam bin Khalifa may be amazing, may be made in America, and African American's experience. Followed by, uh, America the Beautiful, followed by finding good people. And I'm kind of seeing a trail, a connecting trail, with all these thoughts. Imam told us a long time ago, he said, keep. A, he said, uh, keep up with my changing emphasis, my changing. And to give attention, keep our minds on his changing emphasis. So alhamdulillah. So I'm gonna read this last part, and then we will stop here. The last part, it says, continuing with the idea of Muslims, Christians and Jews. Imam says, some think it is only Muslims, Christians and Jews know. When Allah says, with the book. He is also talking about Sapiens, and they still exist. I would say this here, but I was always, I was in Jordan, on the Interface mission. And I met a lady, and she was Sapien. A young lady, I guess, thirty, forty years old. And I remember her saying. Which, but then she shared with me, she wanted me to encourage the Muslims to. To, to, to recognize them and to respect them. Apparently, the part of the world she was in, the Muslims were not very respectful. Of them as Sapiens. Which is sad to report, but this was she shared with me, that was back in two thousand eight. When I was overseas. So Sapiens are here, I don't know where they're at in large numbers, or really in any kind of numbers, but they are here. And they are mentioned in the Quran as well. So it's nine fourteen, I'm gonna leave this time system in there for any wrap up. Or announcements before Brother Imam Delacy, he has people come on. So alhamdulillah, thank you all for this opportunity. And the next Sunday, I'm not gonna be here. I'll be here on our banquet next Saturday. And beginning on Friday, Saturday, Sunday's gonna be very, very busy. And I would not want to commit to being here next Saturday. Brother Mark? You're on mute. You're on mute, brother Mark?
Yes, okay, yes, I just want to thank you, Imam Michael Saheer, doing a wonderful job in hosting. Uh, this early morning, Taliyah on Saturday morning, as time permits in your schedule. It's very enlightening, very informational, and very educational. And I think all of us are trying to make the commitment to get the word out. That, uh, Massages and Islamic Centers, it's in association with Imam Muhammad. Or just those that want to learn more about the religion of Al Islam, know about this production. Um, it can be very helpful and beneficial for the progress of a community life. That we're obligated to try to establish. And this most certainly can help us in a positive, progressive way. We're just acknowledging, and thank you for that. And we do look forward, we do look forward to next week. In being there with you in Indianapolis, Indiana, for your thirty-third. Um, acknowledgement of, um, apparent appreciation.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, appreciation, and what I believe, Sister Khadijah Siddiq Muhammad. We were looking forward to that, so alhamdulillah. I haven't paid for my ticket, but Imam, but make sure you have a reserve pot. I'll pay for it when I get there. I didn't know that until later on. But Imam Jahat Mukman did let me know that some of the believers had already paid in advance. But I haven't, but I will, so. Reserve a seat for me, okay, I'm coming, Inshaallah.
Inshaallah, looking forward to seeing you all. And we have a vanload coming from St. Louis, alhamdulillah. Yeah, I also got one from a few in Chicago coming, and Cincinnati, and Columbus, Ohio. I got a call from Imam, uh, Mustafa Islam in Springfield, Ohio.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so.
Yeah, they're in Midwest, alhamdulillah. Um, yeah, it's, I just called it a hop, skip and jump from St. Louis to Indianapolis. It's not a real long. You know, so. That's good. Yes, sir. So everything's going fairly well up to this point, yeah, before the event, correct?
Yes, yes, you know, this is our thirty-third one, and I feel good about it. You know, it's, you know, this, people say, well, people not doing this. I said, this is, we done this before, don't worry about it.
You know, it's significant, thirty-three, this is a pivotal year for us as a community. Community, Imam Wa Fu D Muhammad. We know that this is the fiftieth anniversary of his leadership. You know, his leadership, you know, leader of this community. And he was, uh, nineteen seventy-five, at thirty-three years. That Allah blessed us to have him physically in our midst in terms of teaching us. And when you know this is thirty-three years for what has been established there in Indianapolis, Indiana. You know, so it's just so many connections, you know, that this is not by happenstance.
You know, also, you know, it takes thirty-three years for this. How the lunar calendar moves up. So it takes thirty-three years to come back to that same point again.
Yeah, I thought about that too the other day, well, I have thought about it before the years passed. But you're absolutely right, thirty-three years to go through all the seasons and come right back. And some of us have been blessed to have done that, such as myself and others. Fifty-eight years going on, fifty-nine years in this community. So you can see, uh, that's truly a blessing, and to come into that conscious awareness and all. Thank you so much.
Michael, thank you for your contribution, praise be to Allah, every Saturday. This Taliyah is most beneficial to all of us. And also, I would, we are sharing the Tafsir of Imam Wa Fu D Muhammad. On selected verses in the Quran. Also, on Sunday evenings, we share the. And the insight of Imam Wa Fu D Muhammad, here on America Muslim three sixty.
Yes, sir.
Uh, myself, Kareem Hamid. Or Michael Hamid. We shared the Ramadan sessions of Imam Wa Fu D Muhammad, here on America Muslim three sixty. That is his intellect, his understanding, and his wisdom. From out of this four-volume set of the Ramadan sessions. And we, the students of Imam Wa Fu D Muhammad, if you would be present and contribute to this valuable.
What time?
Uh, it begins at, uh, at eight, eight o'clock. If I'm not mistaken, wait a minute, let me, no. At, 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 it begins at five P M Eastern Standard Time. Four Central Standard Time, and two Pacific Coast Time. So we are definitely, uh, uh. Uh, we are definitely sharing the wisdom, the insight of Imam Wa Fu D Muhammad. And we are grateful to have this information with us. And we give it freely, we look forward to everyone, please, come to hear the insight. You know, at the Ramadan sessions, Imam Wa Fu D Muhammad went very, uh. Very insightful, very deep into what he was proposing. And I think it is very advantageous that we reacquaint ourselves with those Ramadan sessions. Right? It is every Saturday evening, praise be to Allah, Michael Hamid and myself, we share. The content of these Ramadan sessions.
Sunday, Kareem, you mean Sunday, not Saturday, Sunday.
Not yet, oh, I'm sorry, I, I meant to.
You inadvertently said it, I know you know.
Yes, it is very. Yes, uh, we want to share this valuable information with all of us. With all of us. So praise be to Allah, we will not allow the understanding of Imam Wa Fu D Muhammad. To fade into memory.
Is it the same link, uh, your same phone number?
Same link, same format here on the M three sixty Zoom. Uh, we are grateful for those that attend. And we want to invite more people to the wisdom, logic, and the knowledge of Imam Wa Fu D Muhammad.
And don't forget our Muslim Journal Telethon, November sixteenth, eleven to three P M. Sister Martha, are we gonna be streaming on AM three sixty?
Yes, ma'am, and it's November fifteenth, is.
November fifteenth, my bad.
Okay, that's good. We're supportive of one another. So yes, it will be as a support, a promotion agreement with Muslim Journal. Uh, alhamdulillah, the fifteenth, we will be, we will have ten minutes of their time on Sunday. The board, the board of Muslim Journal, as they meet every Sunday. So CWSC AM three sixty will have ten minutes to present on, to them. And just recognizing, for those who didn't know, the, uh, the affiliation. And the partnering with certain areas with Muslim Journal, between Muslim Journal and CWSC AM three sixty.
Yes, and let me add, let me add to that, for those who want to attend. I'm a part of the National Muslim Journal Committee, uh, Committee Conference. That each and every Sunday, for those in the Eastern Standard Time Zone, it'll be twelve noon. Those in the Central Standard Time, it would be eleven A M. Those in Pacific Coast Time, it'd be nine A M for one hour, as Sister Martha is saying. The call-in number is six zero five four seven five four thousand. Six zero five four seven five four thousand. Then you put in the access code, the access code is three zero two two six eight pound. Three zero two two six eight pound. And that'll put you in the National Muslim Journal Committee Conference. That's held each and every Sunday. And so you get the ten minutes that CWSC will be giving and others and all for this. Uh, this telethon, um, that will be happening. Uh, this is a fundraiser for the Muslim Journal. And so it's needed and necessary, so please, let's participate, do what we can. To make this telethon a successful telethon for the Muslim Journal. Thank you.
Okay, and don't forget about, we got the Muslim Journal, a time to be grateful, in New Jersey. Coming up December eleventh, you know, uh. I'm going, I already paid for a lot of, and I bought my airline ticket yet, now I'm afraid to buy an airline ticket.
All right, we're right there with you, ma'am, I'm thinking about driving.
With you on that. Rail, rail travel, train, train travel.
Let me think about that.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mark.
No, 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 I said, thank you, I didn't think about train, because I drove to Philly, me and the brother did. It was just ten, twelve hours, and it was okay, but, you know, I hadn't thought about train.
That'd be a nice scenic, mainly a scenic train route, that'd be something to think about, you're right.
But the other thing about it, you know, when you're going through your hometown and they doing construction. And you say, I know a shortcut, and you forget that everybody else knows that same shortcut. Well, they're back on the train, you like the train, you back up, I don't know. I mean, but December going to the northeast, it can be risky with snow. Driving far, so I don't know.
Well, I have to make my.
Go ahead, Mark, partner.
I have to make my flight, as a matter of fact, I get my daughter on top of that, she makes all the reservations for when I travel. Let her know that, Inshaallah, I'll be flying, you know, because I'm going by myself. So, you know, I get the assistance and everything, Allah bless me. Uh, you know, get the assistance that I need to be able to get there.
When it's nine twenty-eight, system in there, I'm turning it back over to you.
Okay, alhamdulillah. All right, Imam Kareem, your hand is raised, go ahead with your comment, please.
No, let me, Laura, I had made the statement that I wanted to make concerning the Taliyah tomorrow. On the Ramadan session of Imam Wa Fu D Muhammad.
Okay, alhamdulillah. Well, um, we are going to, uh. Prepare to turn it over to Brother Michael Hamid. Assalamualaikum to you. We getting ready to start our program, preparing to make it in the land of plenty. Okay, preparing to make it is, uh, to prepare, pardon me, preparing to make it in the land of plenty. Is a program that introduces how to be prosperous in America. How to be prosperous in America. Where the character has to be the financial, uh, foundations. And also the spiritual development of the human being. To be prosperous in the United States of America, hosted by Imam Delacy Umar. And facilitated as well by Michael Hamid and Professor Rabani Muhammad. All right, so the mic is yours.
This is me, that's my brother Raheem, can you hear me, Mike?
Yes, sir, five by five.
My camera.
We can, we can see your pores.
I'm close up?
You're not that close, but yeah. We got a nice view, the top of your, can, the top of your head is a little chopped.
So what about that?
Yeah, that's better. Let me see, yeah, we need more. All right, come a little bit more.
Okay.
That's good, that's good, that's good, that's good.
All right. With God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer. I witness there is no deity worthy worship but one, who's one creator. Who has created everything. Arabia created everything. And we witness that Prophet Muhammad, peace and blessings be upon the Prophet. Is the seal of the prophets and Allah's messenger to us, to all of humanity. And earlier it was mentioned that he, he was the revelation walking. When asked of his character, he was the revelation walking. And the guidance, we like to look at revelation as guidance for humanity. And his example and model is an excellent model for human beings, human leadership. No matter what the gender is, uh. He was an excellent model for men, women, uh, children. Even how he treated the children. Excellent example to the world, all of humanity. Yes, we are, we are, our program is preparing to make it in the land of plenty, we welcome you all. And we have, we have discussed talking about neighborly needs. And it, and there's a, there's a surah, a chapter in the Quran called Neighborly Needs. Arabic El Maun. And we're gonna, we're gonna basically take a look at that particular. And, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna basically take a look at that particular chapter and formulate this particular presentation today. And, uh, we hope you enjoy it. We hope you be able to relate to the significance of, uh, revelation being sent down to humanity for the benefit of humanity. And the benefit of the, the direction for the life of the, of the human family. So, welcome, Michael, welcome Professor Rabani. And, uh, Michael, did you, uh, did you by chance get the Ayat of the Quran we were talking about?
I did not, Imam, I beg your pardon.
Professor Rabani, you have it, Professor Rabani?
Uh, no, I was looking for the, no, no.
Yes, I can't think of the number right now. Someone help us with the number of that chapter. So yes, we're gonna use that chapter and, and we, I like to begin our program just reading it, Inshallah. Uh, we are reading it in English, so one of you guys could read it in English.
Professor? Hold on.
I'll go ahead and recite it in Arabic while you're waiting. While you're finding it. Yes, thought of the law. Read it for us, please.
Have you seen the one who denies the day of judgment? He, it, it, he is who drives away the orphan with harshness and does not encourage the feeding of the poor. So woe to those who after salat and prayers but are neglectful of the salah. Who neither observes the salah. Uh, these are the one, this is in parentheses, who neither observes the salah as it's ought, as it ought to be observed, nor observe it on its prescribed timings. Those who make show of piety but refuse to, uh, to offer help to the needy.
Yeah, and this, in this particular, this particular chapter, El Maun, neighborly needs, neighborly needs, and it puts emphasis on certain aspects of our life that, uh, just natural needs, taking, taking care of the orphans. Firstly, and it starts out, have you seen the one who, who lies about these important matters that, uh, what supports life? The dean, and it, they translate it as the day of judgment, because it is, it is an obligation that you're gonna be accounted, accountable for when you go before your Lord, your Creator. How did you manage these things? And this dean is significant of the day of judgment. That's why they translate denies the day of judgment. Because you know, in our Surah, we have Malik Yomi Dean in Al Fatihah. But, uh, Michael, share some thoughts with it. I don't wanna go into that deep with translating it, but I did wanna set that tone that the Quran actually was saying, have you seen the one who lies about the reality of, of life?
And also, yeah, that's very good. With God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful Redeemer. Yes, the, the denial of, 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 of simple and basic compassion and empathy for other people. And we see in this lack of compassion, this lack of empathy for other people. We see it demonstrated in a large way when natural disasters hit and sometimes not so natural. The fires out in California, you find people, you know, responding by helping the neighbors who were displaced from their homes by the fires, you know, uh, uh, and sometimes those fires are set by unthinking and uncaring individuals, you know. Uh, so this, this compassion, this empathy is there because we see it, we see it come out, even in the deep south where people are considered, you know, uh, overtly racially sensitive, you know, and not really, like I had a young man tell me uh, years ago on a construction site, that he was raised where he didn't care anything about black people until a black man saved his life late one night. He was stuck in a car. And I, I remember, you know, uh, Imam Muhammad sharing experiences where he observed how Caucasians oftentimes, they are they're not mature when it comes to interacting with people. They're slow, they're slow to, to open up to other peo, other people outside of the, 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 their, their group. And how, how, uh, individually, you may see a European American who was raised as a racist, individually, they may be very open to an individual of, of another ethnic group, black or, or, or another group, you know, Hispanic, on the individual basis, and still not like the group or have, have no, no care or, or interest, and sometimes even animosity, you know, hatred for another group of people. But individually, you know, they may warm up, you know, so I'll stop.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's a very, very good start. Uh, when you, when you mentioned how that the empathy is, is, is lost. Uh, well, I was, wouldn't say lost, but being obscured, obscured in this present day society. Uh, Professor, share some thoughts if you would, please.
Yeah, with God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful Redeemer, we witness that there is no God other than Allah. And we witness that Muhammad, the Quran was revealed as his servant, uh, as his, uh, messenger and our prophet, the seal of the prophets. So, I, when, when I, when I read it, I think about a, a broader perspective, the, the individual perspective, we know that, I tell you. We know that type of, uh, situation. There are two things. One, 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 they run parallel with my thinking. One is when our people were, uh, vetted from a- accessing, uh, the, the American dream, American dream. And when hard times come upon our people, there are also hard times upon Caucasian people. And I remember my, my grandmother who had land and grandfather had land and productivity and had a productive mind, a productive brain. Uh, they would share, uh, some of the, the resources, uh, some of the food resources that they had with, uh, with the Caucasian, poor Caucasian families that lived right down the road. And I thought that was so noble, you know? Then I, then I go and travel overseas and, uh, I see that the rich, uh, uh, so-called Muslims uh, have almost, uh, in many, many cases, uh, turned their backs on, on the, uh, on the poor and downtrodden. And I said, now, all these brothers and sisters that come to Juma every Friday and then come out of Juma and walk down the street and you see these young children homeless and, uh, uh, hungry and, in fact, some of them are fearful even approaching, uh, people on the streets because of the, uh, the, uh, hard-heartedness of the government. And, 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 and that, uh, that was one of the motivations that I had about uh, trying to get money together and go and, uh, take care of some of these, uh, orphans overseas and the cancer case. Because this is something that, uh, I can't, I can't, I can't put up with it. I can't stand seeing it happen. And I tell people about it. I don't care. I don't, I don't care what they think, but I tell you what, that, that's why that, that chapter one oh seven is so powerful, you know? Hypocrisy. And it, it addresses your, your hypocrisy. You say one thing and don't do it, you know?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Professor. And that's, that's excellent examples. You know, I, I was talking to a friend of mine from Nigeria this morning after prayer at the, at the masjid, and, uh, we were pointing out how the rich of our governments, and I was speaking, I was speaking about Africa as well as here, how they hoard all of the wealth. And, uh, and you know, and, and we seen a great example here right now with this argument over opening up, opening up the, the cu, the country, the government, that the government is closed down. They, now they are holding the poor food for the poor and children, et cetera, as ransom to debate whether we, whether they're gonna share the wealth of America with Americans. So, and I'm not gonna, not gonna go into this group or that groups, politics, but just the idea of what we are talking, this is what the chapter is talking about. They were, they were repelling with, with rudeness the fact that they are hungry children. Being, uh, being, uh, forced to look at their, their, uh, desperate, they're putting their parents in desperation. So, Michael, share some thoughts if you would.
Yeah, yes, um, a lot of thoughts are running through my mind right now, um. The, the, the conditions that we have and we are experiencing are eye-opening. Um, not just, uh, neighborly needs, but just in terms of seeing the citizenry, seeing the citizenry. Uh, you know, this, there's this, there's this idea, it's a hypocritical idea when you look at the behavior not matching the, the language. But you know, there's these people that identify themselves as super patriots and super, super citizens, you know? But their, their actions don't, don't display that. They, they, they don't show that they're really, uh, citizens. Uh, and this is, you know, we may have different religious expressions and different, uh, 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 economic, you know, levels in the country, but the citizen, the citizen, uh, rights and responsibilities are equal, equal for all. Now, whether or not one group of citizens want to recognize that, that's what the country stands on. And, uh, i- it's interesting about life. When you disrespect those things that require respect, they're, they're, they're very challenging and, uh, effective, uh, responses that are in the life, lot, the logic of life itself. When you don't respect those things that are supposed to be respected, then there, there, there are dire consequences for that. You don't get away with, you know, the, the reckless, the person who lives recklessly is gonna find that they're running to, I, I used to share, share this example. When I was a very young person, I, I, I did not respect the laws of gra, gravity, you know? I would try to turn a corner, run in full blast. And in, in the original house that we lived in D C in Southwest, Southwest D C, I would run into a wall trying to turn the corner to go to the kitchen, you know? And, uh, I would do it every time, until finally enough times happened where I knew I, I just was not gonna make that turn, run at full speed. And that's how life is, you know? You gonna run in, you gonna run into something, you know, and so I'm doing that.
Yeah, that's the color, that's the point, that's a, that's a point, that's a point of color, a nice take of the look at it.
What that is.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a belief in our religion that, that there are consequences, uh, of good and bad for the actions in the individual that are already prescribed by a creator who has designed the earth perfectly. Yes, perfectly. For a short explanation for you. Yes, and, uh, yeah, so you know, here, here Allah is addressing us about the one who, who lies about the reality of life. And he, he, he repels the orphans with harshness. And you know, so we are, we are looking at these things now, and there's no considerations for the poor. There's no consideration for the poor in need. So here's another, another example that we were speaking of when Professor mentioned, uh, situation in Ethiopia, neglecting the poor on the streets, the orphans on the streets, et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, and you know, I like that, that, uh, that next part of the Ayat where it says, way loon, little mercy lean. Woe to those who are neglectful of their worship, their, their obligation. Woe, woe to those who are neglectful of their obligation to the Creator. Way loon, little mercy, mercy lean. You know, I like that, uh, I like that, uh, that word, way loon. And, uh, I think of it as whaling. They gonna be punished, they gonna be whaling. Way loon. And, uh, and, uh, it, it almost says it, you know, that's, that's what, uh, that's what's interesting about that, that word. Say those who are ne, who are neglectful, so says woe to them, woe to them. And we know woe is, uh, you know, and I was thinking, that's, that's a terrible thing, that's a terrible thing. Yes, sir. Professor, share some thoughts if you will, please.
Whoa, you know, you, you're like, uh, Michael, trying to, trying to make that ninety degree turn. About, uh, disobeying, uh, the natural nature of yourself and, and create, and all creation is that you, you, you are taught a lesson. And if you take it, uh, uh, and, 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 you know, you know, fear brings about intelligence. You know that, right? So, fear, uh, motivates you to think, uh, deep and to act based upon, uh, the hurt or the benefit of that, uh, situation. So, yeah, I, I was just thinking about some of, uh, my Christian friends uh, and, uh, reading some of our readings back into the old, the, uh, the, the, the New Testament, uh, 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 Gospel. And, uh, there was two, there was two sets of people, there was a, you know, Christ Jesus always had, may peace be upon him, always had these people who, who were trying to degrade his, uh, his mission. And there's always these, uh, smart, supposedly smart scholars and, uh, legal, uh, people. And, uh, uh, and they said, are you trying to change the law of Moses? And he said, no, uh, I'm not trying. I said, I, I came to fulfill the law of Moses. Now, they say, well, what new, uh, uh, law did you bring? He said, I didn't bring any, but one. And so, okay, what, what, what was that? He said, the only, the only law that I would add to that is love thy neighbor as thyself. So you see, it's consistent in all the religions. I don't care what people talk about, uh, all the Torah, the Gospel, the, the Quran, all the religions, if you wanna know. All the religions, if you wanna know the truth, this, this whole creation has been designed to establish truth, okay? I mean, science.
Yes.
Science will give you the truth of, of every situation or every element in this creation. So, you can, don't worry about, oh, this, uh, this is, this is my religion, it must come from God. Well, examine it through the full spectrum of revealed knowledge and revealed scriptures. And you will see that it's, it, it speaks to the same situation all the way through until the final uh, the way of life has been given to mankind. Through the Quran, see where it, it deviates, see where it doesn't deviate.
Yeah.
That's, that's on those who will have, who have doubt.
Let me share something with that professor. I, I want, you know, last, last, uh, yesterday I had a really fulfilled day. I uh, I graduated from my uh class for the blind, right? And they had a little celebration. But uh, during the class, I had, I had an instructor that was was actually sharing and testing the skills like touch, smell, taste, right, to distinguish what, what to avoid, et cetera. How, how do you smell something that may harm you, taste something that may harm you, et cetera, et cetera? But before, before she did her class, we had a discussion about history, uh, human, human beings, et cetera, et cetera. And she had, she had taken the position that human beings have been warriors and taking people land. Cause I was talking about what, what's going on in the world. She started and I just have, I just had to get involved with that conversation with her. But uh, so I brought up how, how, how human beings have lost their human sentiments and empathy for others. And except, well, that's been going on for centuries and centuries and yeah, yeah, yeah. And I just, I did just what you just said. I s- I said, but there, I said, but is it moral? I said, is it correct? Whether it is or not, they've been doing it and taking land and killing people, et cetera, et cetera. I said, yes, but is it moral? I said, wait, I said, there's a, there's a test for this. That's, that is, that's very easy. It's not rocket science. Do unto others as you would have done unto you, you know? I say, I say, I say, I said, we had this when we were children. We understood that you should treat people the way you want to be treated. So, she got very quiet. And she said, that's right, that's right. But you know, but these things, these, these common things that are in nature, that Allah has created in every human being's nature to know that you have, you, if you wanna treat people the way you want to be treated. And that's, 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 that I would say is so important. That's elementary. And then this is related to what we are talking about. People, they, they are taking all of the wealth and, and impoverishing the people who, and they are taking the wealth of Allah's creation. It's not, it doesn't belong to them. It's on loan to us. And that's why we have, we have terminology such as the poor do for the cat, the poor do. They'll do this money. And if we don't, if we fail to give it to them, we create a situation in our own hearts. By the way, this, this event we went to last night, uh, I went to another event last night, a dinner, we had a dinner for leaders. And it was, it was record referencing the spirit of the heart. Uh, and there was a great group of people, professionals, nurses, doctors, all African American, mostly African American. We had a few mix, a few mixed people in there, Caucasian and others. But mostly African Americans. And they were, they were talking about the heart and how, how much damage is being done to our heart. Is African, we are, we are number one on heart disease. And it's, and it's definitely not all because we are eating bad. Lot of it is. We are eating all kind of foods that we shouldn't be eating. But what about the spirit of the heart? That's what attract to the pro- to the program itself. When they said the title of it is the spirit of the heart. I said, oh, wow, this is interesting. So, what about that spirit in the human being? That, that, that where these things affects the heart, this bad spirit, this bad understanding anxiety, anxiousness, stress, trauma, that really affects the heart. And I think we suffer so much from that. So, Michael, share some thoughts if you will.
Yes, uh, praise be to God, praise and thanks to do to Almighty God. The uh, the uh, the life is, is designed to challenge us. And uh, we have, you know, the, the, the publishing of ideas that are foundational is what we find in the Quran. Uh, the, the Stoics and the uh, the uh, the enlightened path of, of Buddha, the uh, the moral and ethical road of, of Confucius. You know, these universal ideas are speaking to what we, we're addressing today. Not, not just the, the uh Torah, the Jewish scripture, and not just Christianity. And one of the big issues is uh, these things have been published, but we have quote unquote scholars and leaders that misrepresent these ideas. They twist these ideas. Perfect example, the Ku Klux Klan. You know, coming, coming, coming out of this idea of racial su- and color superiority and, and, and claiming the cross as, 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 as a tool that they use for terrorism. You know, against Catholics, against, against Jews, and most certainly against African American people, black folks. So, you know, this, this uh requisit- disclaiming of, of, of symbols and language. You know, these doggone folks quote the Bible when they start raising hell, you know? And uh, it, this, I can't think of the name of this movie. A very well and beloved actor, Matthew McConaughey, and a very, very, very appreciated Samuel Jackson win this movie. Where this man, this man uh committed murder against uh individuals that, that raped, raped his
Killed the Mockingbird?
No, not Killed the Mockingbird. Uh, but you can just, you can Google Matthew McConaughey, Samuel, Samuel Jack and uh, the, the young lady, I love her too, Sandra Bullock.
Oh, yes.
Okay, now, in this crowd scene, this, this racist crowd is out there and they're, 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 they're and but, but as, as the camera pans, there's this big sign saying, God is white. Or Jesus is white, one of the two. I can't remember right now. But you, if you watch, it's a very, very compelling movie. Uh, you'll see this sign identifying God with being a color, you know, or a particular ethnic group. This is, this was, now this is Hollywood helping us out. Hollywood is helping us. Look, here's the problem right in your face. This is what, this, this is one of the problems, people. You know, you got God in a particular color and in a, in a particular form of, of a European, you know, a European looking, and it doesn't even equate with the way the people looked in that area. You know, it doesn't make logical sense that you got a European God in Egypt and in Palestine and, 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 and in Nazareth. It doesn't make sense.
Yeah. You know, uh, such, such a powerful, powerful language. Let me, let me just make this statement here. You know, uh, in the same conversation, we were talking about how in what, in other words, the person I was talking to in this conversation that I was encouraging to see uh, the basics of, of, of life during the others that you would have done under you. This person was, was a Cuban refugee, her parents were Cuban refugees who had been run out of Cuba, taking their property and stuff taken. She was under trauma and stress. And she had, she was, she was talking to me from a particular uh part of conversation that is conservative and liberal with the idea of conservatism and liberalism. And I'll make some more comments on that later, but the trauma that she was under, and I told her, I said, I, I said, I know it must be real traumatic for you to have your family property and whatnot taken and you come up as a young child, you know, living in very, in Florida and various places, right? So, Bilal, let's bring Bilal.
Yeah, I wanna just let, give you a heads up. When you lean forward, you go out of frame.
Thank you.
Now, go ahead.
Thank you, Mike.
Bilal, welcome. Your mic is open. Bilal, well, he has you as Bilal here. Uh, uh, I don't know if this is Bilal or not, but uh, the mic is open and the hand is up. Let me see if I can. Okay, uh, we'll just continue until we get this.
Yes. So, uh, so I did I hear? So, uh
Well, just trying to open their mic, please speak, so we can identify you. We may have you on, we may have you on the uh
Thank God for this program. We thank God for each other and our audience. You know, we are, we are so blessed by God because we have, we have revelation. We have the universe creating natural creation that God gave us to speak to us and give us insight into different things that we need to uh, to help us in the world. And most of the help, the great help that we have is basically in, inside of our own nature. And because of our sensitivity and because of our concern for others, that we have a very, we come into another dimension, very, very powerful dimension. And that dimension is called faith. So, praise be to Allah that our concern brings us into what we need. And that great dimension that we have, uh, once again, is faith. So, the increase of this faith, the increase of the help for humanity. And we continue to, I'd say revolve back into our original nature that, that Allah has uh, that we were in the, when we came here, that's uh, right out of, out of the womb, out of mother. So, praise be to Allah for that. And uh, we just, we just thank for how the simplicity that God really gave us just by being good people, how we can accomplish much. And also the fact that he coming to the, to the point where even I remember he gets, he got to the point where, I mean, he does a thing is that if God has did that. And if he tried to work on something, it was if God had did that. And the prophet was like that also. And so, he got so comfortable with, with, with himself that he knew God was teaching him. And all he would do, you know, when it come, he'll see, he'll say, oh, God, thank you, thank you, thank you again and again and again. And we get to that stage in our growth and development also. So, praise be to Allah. There probably be many of us right there right now. So, praise be to Allah. Alhamdulillah.
Yes, and uh, let me, let me finish this thought, Michael, please. Uh, then we will circle to the professor. But we are, we own a lot of uh, we own some real, I would think, uh, uh, important territory as we are speaking about sol咔 generosity and how it, how it affects the heart. And uh, either for the good, we talked about, for the good of it or the bad of it. How it, how it, how it can affect the heart. If we do, if we embrace the human family with all of its intricacies and differences and still love each other and uh, and respect each other, we have, we are creating an environment for a healthy heart. A healthy heart. And if we, and if we do the opposite of that, we are destroying the heart. We are creating stress on the heart, hypocrisy on the heart. All of it, all of the things that Bilal mentioned, the natural, the natural things that Allah has put into the creation is there, if we respect them and embrace them and, and uh, use them, they will help us be, stay healthy, stay healthy. But if we become a rebel and uh rebel against our own best self, our own best self, we're gonna destroy the life that Allah has given us. And this is what this chapter, when it talks about, have, have you seen the one who lies about faith in the hereafter, the judgment, the reality of life? How he's harsh against the children, just repels the, get away from him. And then like, I'm not gonna give you anything. You could work, you should be able to work and earn. You hear it in the language of the, of the that those who gonna get healthcare, they need to be workers. They need to have a job. They need to do this, they need to do that. Not just this harshness for uh expecting something from the person who's in need, the person who's in need. If they are needy, they not obligated to pay the care under our way of life. It's not accepted. Come in, professor, please.
Yes. Well, that's a, that's an antidote for, for solving the heart attack.
Ah, yes, yeah.
Because your heart uh is more than a piece of flesh. It's uh, it, it is the, it is the uh female that corresponds to the male, the brain. You know, it, it, it requisitions, it, it gives the, the brain, uh, it, it, it summons the, the brain to a requisition. And that requisition goes to the brain and the brain has to act on it. So, when you pray, when you make sense to, you put your forehead on the ground. And now, what good is putting your forehead on the ground when you come up and you don't do nothing? You know, you just don't do anything that would uh, uh, affect, affect your spiritual and mental and physical concern. Here we have um, uh, in America, over the last, I think we celebrate our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary.
Coming up, glad twenty twenty six.
Out of the two hundred and fifty years of American existence, there's only been sixteen years of those, the two hundred and fifty years when America was not at war with something or with someone.
Wow.
Yeah, sixteen years. So, who is the war monger? Is it the Russians? The Chinese not fighting no battle? The, uh, all these so, so-called enemies, you know? And, and we surely are not fighting, we fighting ignorance. I mean, we are warriors and we fight, we fighting ignorance.
Yeah, we go, we gonna win.
Oh, it's a, it's a done deal, as we say.
Yeah.
You know, it's a done deal. It's just a matter of, uh, uh, the, the, the small few will continue uh to, to, to battle and to struggle and to establish the life of the Muslim. That's religion, you know? Almighty God said, count not your Islam as a favor to God. It is a favor to you. And then he go, and, and Allah says in uh, in the, in, in the Quran, he said, this day I have perfected for you your religion or your way of life and completed my favor on you and have preferred for you. This is, oh my God, it's talking to the human being. I prefer you and Islam as a way of life.
Yeah.
This life and prepare yourself to be acceptable to the next life, oh, follow this Quran and then, and, and, and the, and the human being, the perfect human being who uh displayed the excellence of the Quran in his life, Muhammad the Prophet, peace be upon him.
Peace be on the Prophet. So, Michael, share some thoughts if you will, my brother. We have, do we have any, anyone in the audience which should make a comment?
We, we invite the audience to, to, to uh come in and share your reflections on this subject that we're, we're addressing. It's not just neighborly needs, but uh, you know, uh, be, being a true human, true humanity.
That's exactly what it is. Yeah.
And uh, you know, the creator, you know, we, we have these ideas about And uh, you know, the creator, you know, we, we have these ideas about God. And uh, the last revelation, the Quran, the generous Quran, that's one of the names. It's very generous and it's noble. And uh, I remember a few years back, uh, I won't mention the group. They introduced this English translation of the Quran. But it was so much commentary, negative commentary given against different people in parentheses. If they, they, they included these comments by way of putting them in parentheses, you know? And uh, then commentary uh, going along with these, these uh, these distortions, you know? And this is not, you know, this is not just the Quran, English Quran presentation, but there are a lot of distortions that have been introduced. I mentioned one in particular in Christianity, you know, the Ku Klux Klan. They're an abomination. They should never have been allowed the presence in America based on the, based on the documents. The Declaration of Independence and the United States Constitution uh, really don't support this kind of thinking and behavior. But it has been permitted to grow, in my opinion, because it's a good tool for suppressing uh, and, 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 and fixing the government movement, the materialistic government focus uh, uh, you know, with, with selfish, selfish and narrow self-interest. And God in the Quran gives us very clear language, serve the willing plan. You know, I don't, I don't need, the creator represents himself in the best way. I don't need your help, human beings. It's a favor to you that you got life. You have life because I have a plan for life. I have a plan for my creation that I brought out of nothing. I've got a definite plan, there's a definite trajectory. We mentioned Carter and how Carter is used. Everything that God has brought out of uh, non-existence into existence. Everything has the potential for good or harm, depending on how it's used. And uh, lastly, out of his own mouth, we heard President Trump tell us, I don't think I'm going to heaven. Wasn't that a revelation? Wasn't that a revelation? But it's compatible with his behavior, not a behavior that he's performing.
Well, he said that, huh?
The doc, the documents tell us, the, 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 uh, the, the, the Bible, the Quran, no. Based on, based on that script, no, you're not going to heaven.
You're in hell now.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so yes, these things are very important, these things are very important. So here we now, here we are looking at neighborly needs, a chapter, a whole seven, seven or eight verses of the Quran instructing us on how our creator expects from us to be human beings. You know, I wanna, I wanna put a spotlight on this because the prophet, he said in a, in a very famous Hadith, you will, you will, you will never enter paradise until you believe and you will never believe until you practice loving one another.
Yes, yes.
Shall I show you how to create love, spread peace, spread peace, spread, he says, spread the Salam. And you know, our Salam is peace be upon you. And we, the man shared that we are obligated to, to make peace and to create peace and to expect it and, and to be peaceful. We are obligated to do that. So here we have now faith, we talking about a future and, and the eye here, you never, the paradise represents a future for us. We, you, you will never get to the future. I'm, I'm using some down, downhill home language here. You will never get to the future, to the future until you have faith. And you would never have faith, and you know, and I was understanding of faith, belief, trust. All of those things are in this, in this idea of faith.
Trust.
Belief, et cetera. And you would never have faith until you practice loving one another. Here's another one, love, you know, and uh, this is not obligation on us that we have to love one another.
It has to be explained, man, because this idea of love in America and in the world.
Yeah, this, this love we are talking about is just to be, to feel every human being. Let me, let me give it in, in some other language. Uh, our creator says every human being has been created, every child of Adam, every child in creation has been created for dignity and honor.
Yes.
Dignity and honor. And uh, and we are supposed to have this type of respect for each other and uh, and, and uh, and, and honor each other. That we uh, we appreciate that we are part of the same human family. And we're not talking about no romance and all that stuff, right? We talking about just basic human uh, uh, love and appreciation that another human being exists on this planet to share life with you, to share thoughts with you, to share conversations with you, to share, to unite, to build a life together or, or, or as a group, to build a community together. And we should be, we should be appreciative of that and love that we have people like that on this planet. That, and this, this is shared freedom spaces we talk about a lot, that we are sharing this planet together. And we, we have to be respectful of each other in that regard. And it should be a, a real affection and looking at, oh, that's, that's a person like myself that I can do these things with and uh, build a better life for all of us. Yes, this, this is what we're talking about. So yes, the, the, to have that type of appreciation for the human family, and this is missing. This is missing in the world. We've gotten so, so, there, there's a lot of angry people running around. You know, just, I, I see it all the time, I'll show others, you as well, see it. So what, how do you think that's affecting the heart? Anytime you could uh, you could worry and create sores in your stomach. How do you, what do you think you can do to your heart? If you, if you uh, if you create this anxiety and stress? And, and really, most of us as African Americans, when we were in there, they were, they were giving statistics that ninety percent, ninety percent of, of the, of the, I, I, it would say that African American population has the, has these issues. And uh, and they, they were, they were looking at different, different ethnic groups, Caucasian, Hispanics, African American. In Brevard County, I, I live in Brevard County. And uh, we were way up on the chart in terms of lack of, lack of healthcare, more heart disease, et cetera, et cetera. And uh, and you know, I thought about it, I say, you know, we have been through so much stress in our, in our history. And uh, the Imam, Imam talked about it as that, that we are new people now. If we, we've come through all of this terrible oppressive environment and, and we as Muslims now, we are, we have embraced Islam, the Quran, the Sunnah. And so we have a new life. And this life is, is to be a witness and be shared with the other, with the outer communities who don't necessarily share, share this life. So we are all of one community. And this uh, you know, and at this meeting, by the way, we had all, all people, but it was the majority African American. And they were, a lot of them were angry. You know, when they had a chance to speak, you could hear the anger that, that they still were feeling the oppression of the, of the, of the past. And I, I'm gonna use language like that, the oppressions of the past. They weren't, they hadn't gotten over, you could see in their language that they hadn't gotten over the discrimination, the oppression, the anxiety, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's just a witness, these things would damage the heart. So Michael, share some thoughts. I know I did, I know I elongated it there a little bit.
No problem, Bilal, we want to bring him in before I make a comment. Go ahead, Bilal.
You did tell that. Alhamdulillah, they said the best thing, the best, best person or the best person that we want to be is a servant of God, of that word. And so here we are, here we on the radio and we uh, we sharing that word, word with other people. So that make them better people. And so now then they, that's not the, that's not the end of it though. Now God, Allah, God is teaching them also. So that's our, that's our, you know, neighborly needs, share that word. You know, we just not giving them a fish, we teaching them how to fish. And they fish by serving God. And it, and it's a continued process. And you have the Lord of all the universe, masters their judgment, everything, constantly teaching you. And all you have to do what? Is just stand up. When you make everything, go to Salah and that, and be what, five times a day for us, anyway. It's so plain, it's so simple. That God have made his life very, very easy for his servant. So we thank God for what he, what he had given to us. We not gonna let the complexity of the confusion of this world, you know, have us off the course.
Yeah.
So praise be to Allah.
We have, we have a solution in the mighty five, yes sir, thank you.
Allah, Allah, Allah.
Five principles of Al Islam, to believe in one creator, pray, pray the five prayers, meditation. Uh, pay the Zakat, take care of the poor, purify your heart with the Zakat, purify your heart by helping others. And then practice discipline, fast the month of Ramadan, a great discipline for building strength and faith and et cetera, et cetera. And then come together to the unity of humanity as demonstrated in the Hars, the, the fill up faith. He's, this is the mighty five, I'm speaking of. Professor, share some thoughts if you will.
Get my comment in.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mike.
I'm on the dock, go ahead.
I did that.
Yeah, yeah, uh, we, we have a guidance that is not just for Muslims.
Right.
We, we have a way of life that is not just for Muslims. We, excuse me, we invite our neighbors and others that are, that are not grounded in a particular faith discipline. We invite them, try Al Islam. Try calling on the Creator. No, you know, no name that identifies the Creator with a particular group of human beings. You know, no Lord, no Lord that is, that is put forward by a particular group to be looked up and deified by all people, no. Call on the Creator, you don't have to call him Allah, he says he has many names. Also, the guidance is refined for human beings. Look at this, God says, don't give charity and follow it up by injury. This is flat-footed language. This is language that it doesn't take a high intellect. You, you know, this is language for a fourteen-year-old or even less. Don't do bad after you do good. Don't, don't do injury, don't injure the person that, that you're giving charity to. And don't think that it's a charity that you, don't think that it's a charity that you recognize them. You know, you so up in the air, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize this person. You know, I know I'm above them, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring myself down and, 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 and speak to them briefly. I don't have to take them home with me. And, and there's another, there's another, uh, there's another idea. And the, if these ideas were put, were put forward by our Muslim brothers that are, are newly arrived here in America from other countries, from Muslim countries. The uh, the uh, the idea, very clear and specific. The obligation on Muslims to protect other houses of worship. That's Christians and Jewish places, the places that call on a, on a, on a, a God or call on a reality that's bigger than the human being and the human family that, that, that we're accountable to. That's very clear language that, that would get rid of some of this, this suspicion of one another. Here you have a group of people whose book tells them and demands on them to respect other religions. And Prophet Muhammad demonstrated this, and I, I'll stop with that.
Yes, Professor, go ahead, share some thoughts if you would, please, sir.
That's also written in the Constitution too.
Yes.
Ah, yes, so whatever name, you know, Almighty God doesn't blame you for uh, your ignorance. He, he call on, he already knows in your heart when, what you, when you, when you were seeking and calling on the one who created the heavens and the earth.
Yes.
He done that. And he, he done hold you, uh, uh, because we, we, you know, we're given over to a, a theater life, you know? And that theater life has all kind of expressions, but he knows what's deep in your heart and then you act on it. And you want to act on it. So that's, that's why we have to build a community life because the community life reinforces uh, your, your, the, maybe the, the, the weakness in you delivering the mail. But it finds a way for you to deliver that mail, deliver that, that uh, good work. That good work that uh, that needs to be done. And that's the, that's the purpose of that community life. And uh, you know, this is the, the beautiful thing about the Ummah. The Ummah is, is uh, universal and this, and our religion is universal. Just like the, if you really want to research, what is this Quran talking about? Research it against the natural creation or uh, exact science, the exact science. Because the exact science, eh, if you want to uh, address it and use it for those people who want to dress and use it, uh, you use gravity. So you don't have to get a, a PhD in physics. You use uh, hydrology. You don't have to get a, 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 a PhD in hydrology and, and uh, water resources.
Yes.
You just jump in the, ju, jump in the river or jump in the, in the ocean. You, you, you'll start, you'll start uh, getting the, the picture of what the water will do and what it won't do.
Jump, jump in the tub.
So, so yeah, that way, uh, this is why it's important for a man that, that, that the life uh, is very easy, Al Islam is easy.
Yes, sir.
When Michael, when you saw, you talked about the Ku Klux Klan, it reminded me of a thing that I had even when I was uh, uh, a teenager. Cause I lived among all kinds of people.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, I observed as a teenager, I said, you know, um, the kids I started out in, in grammar school with in first grade, so forth and so, and we became buddies and we shared our baseball cards and shot marbles and did all these things. And uh, I said to myself, and then uh, then when we started going out beyond the school environment, we found out that uh, I'm, I'm seeing them being, being shy, staying away, you know? Why? Why? And I, and, and it came to my mind that these guys uh, are fearing something.
That's right.
And I don't know what it was.
Yeah.
They didn't want to be seen with an African American in their community. You see, so I, I observed the fact that that was the situation uh, where we said, well, he, uh, they, he's, they're afraid of being called nigger lovers.
Yeah.
That was, that was the biggest fear, even today, even with, with people in high levels of society. They say, oh, the Republican, what does that mean? That I'm not supporting the, 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 the efforts of, of establishing something in the community of African Americans?
Yes.
That was, that's the undertone. And that's the thing that I observed even when I was young as a teenager or even a, even, even younger than that in grammar school.
Yes.
You see, okay?
But Bilal wants to get a, a word in.
Okay, let me just say this, Michael. So welcome to those who neglect. Okay, let me just say this, Michael. So woe to those who are neglectful of their prayers. Woe to the wish who are neglectful of their prayers, who wish to be seen by people. But like you said, a hardy looking down, but refuse, refuse to supply neighborly needs. This is a serious, serious matter. Bilal, come in, please.
Being in this pro- program is how to make it land of plenty. You know, your spiritual life, our spiritual life is expressed in, in the material. So then material, you know, we need to do with the material, we, we get to establishment of the institution that we need for food, food, clothing and shelter in order to survive on this planet. And also we have, we have liberty, we have freedom, we happy. So you can have your paradise on earth. And not, not, and we know we about that, about the afterlife, but they also a paradise here for the living. And we wanna have that established also. So praise be to Allah, back to what the neighborly needs too. So we like to see our neighbors having good names that they want out of life. Get your share of the material world. And it's, and, and, and nothing spooky about it. It, you know, it gonna take work. So, so, so we thank God, you thank God for just the common sense, we have a common sense religion. And uh, and we not spooky. So, that is.
Thank you much, sir. Thank you. Michael, share some thoughts. What has our time, Michael?
We, yes, we uh, we've got about twenty-five minutes, twenty-six minutes. Uh, so thi- this, this life needs guidance. That's why we have scripture. Because the life needs guidance. The life is too, too complex. God did not bring humanity into the world to be left alone. He made the life complex. I, I just recently saw it. It, it, it had been absent from my view for a while. But this saying that life is not fair. Well, really, that's a left, well, that, no, that's a right-handed way of condemning the Creator. God created life. Do you think he would give you a life that's unfair? You're not seeing him correctly. You're not seeing the God of, of the creation correctly when you say that. The difficulties in life, the bitterness of life, the challenges of life are designed to make us better. There are challenges that we have collectively, that we, we, many of us experience, the same challenges. You know, the challenge of gravity and the challenge of the, of, of disease, it challenges us, it challenges all of us. You know, I'm seventy-eight and I'm having a little more difficulty walking. Maybe if I lost a few pounds, I'd be better situated for walk. I don't know. Well, I do know. But lastly, I just wanna say that uh, this life is perfectly designed for us individually as human beings to grow. I told a lady once, she called herself a prophetess, you know, she was a European lady and she was uh, in my space and she was telling people that she was a prophet, prophetess. And that, if one day, it was kinda irritating me, you know, but one day I decided to just tell her. I said, you know, cause she was telling me how, how, how generous she was towards black, black folk, African Americans. And it kinda bothered me. And I said, you know, the Creator permitted us to go through the difficulties that we've gone through as a, as a group. And you know, it's made us better. We're better. Not that y- your ancestors intended that for us. Like we hear governor, the governor here in Florida telling us that slavery did us some good. You know, slavery was good for us. He didn't say it exactly like that, but that's, that was the gist of it. He was telling black folks that slavery was good for you.
And we did you a favor.
We did you a favor. But no, the Creator did us a favor, not just for us, but for you too, governor. Because we have through those experiences and through that environment of dysfunctionality and overcoming the dysfunction, the potential coming out, the potential is there for all of us, but a, a sufficient number of us have, have, have been brought up. And that's the nature of life. Those who have been most challenged by life, they have certain, they have certain qualities, certain muscles. The life gives you certain muscles when you overcome the challenges. That's the nature of life. When you overcome, you, 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 you build up not just resilience, but you're able to, you know, I, 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 I'm, I was in a meeting last, yesterday afternoon, and the presenter was saying how patterns free us. When you, when you see the patterns of life, when you see the patterns of oppression, when you see the patterns of material success, it frees us to be able to go after those things or overcome those things. We can overcome oppression when we see the pattern of oppression. The pattern of oppression begins with a lack of empathy. I'm better than you. I'm diff- you're different. You know, and this is not just in terms of ethnic groups, white and black. In your own family, you got, you got, you got brothers and sisters that think like that. I'm better than you, little, little, little Negro boy, you know, you, you, look, give me your stuff. Look, I had a younger brother that used to really, he upset me, but he really upset my brother next to me who was next to him in age. He would take my young, take my, 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 my brother Gregory's, my brother Gregory's toys and break them up. Just, you know, cause he felt like it. And that would set my, my brother off. And I'd have to be the negotiator, you know? I would make, make jokes and whatnot to keep him, to bring his, his anger level down, you know? But we have, what I'm saying is we have this kinda thing in families. You know, there's some relatives that you might not like because of their behavior. It's not a racial thing. They're your blood. And I'll stop there.
Yes, sir. We have, we have a lot of challenges that we are, we are dealing with as a, a human family. And trying, and we are trying to get to a better life, a better situation. And, and we only gonna do it together. We only gonna be able to do it by keeping the, keeping a unity of purpose, a sense of purpose and a shared purpose, a sense of shared purpose and working together to further that with all, with all of the human family. This was another discussion when I was telling you I had this discussion with this lady, young lady. She was uh, she was traumatized because of her past experience and have, and was pursuing a way of thinking that was contradictory to her own best interest itself.
Yes.
Uh, and, and I was recognizing it, I recognized it instantly. And, but I let her talk for a little while till she really just said some things that motivated me to respond and with some correct, with a correct way of thinking. But we are shared, we have shared spaces. And we are, and I've tried to emphasize to her, I said, you know, I told her this, I say, I love America. I love this country. I said, this country has facilitated for me to do anything and everything I wanted to do. I have that freedom to do it here. And uh, and I said, I did everything I wanted to do. I did everything in my life I wanted to do. I said, I love America. You know, I had, I was riding down the road with a friend in, in this big truck, eighteen wheeler, we were moving cars from the Midwest to the East Coast, et cetera, et cetera. Up and down mountains, down in valleys, you know, over there, all kinda adventures out there. You know, and he was, he was telling me about how, how they took this property from the Indians. I told him, I said, well, they weren't doing nothing with it. I said, they were just fighting each other and running around chasing buffalo, excuse me, Indians if you're out there. And I'm not saying they were justified in doing it. But now we are riding on highways, I told him, in air-conditioned vehicles, you know? So we, we, so this, yes, that was a bad part that they did, but there's something good that came out of it. So we can, we can stay dwelling on how mean they were, how, how bad it was, how this it was. And we will never get the benefit. We will miss all of the benefit that has come from that bad action. We were talking about good and bad and everything. So in, now we are in a situation where America has changed. And we have access to much more now, even though there's a, there's a spirit that's, that's coming into our lives, that's trying to take us back. Now, if we keep on arguing about what, what he did to us and don't use a strategy to correct the thinking, the language environment or the thinking that, that uh, they tried to uh, force on the, on the, uh, I would say the vulnerable minds that's in the, in the society and not use revelation, the new life, the, the new spirit, the new soul, the new human being that has been created to, to counter that, we are under obligation. This is what Mary Likey Yomi Dean mean, that on the day of judgment, you're gonna have to answer for your laziness, your lethargic attitudes, et cetera, et cetera, where you didn't do anything. Yes, you're gonna be accountable for that, professor. Stop, please, share some thoughts.
Yeah, that uh, I was thinking when you were talking about uh, the uh, say, the, the, the land and the Indians and uh, what, what they could have done. If they had, if, if, if they, there's another uh, leaf on that page that if they had turned it over and say, look, we have a way of raising buffalo that will always be uh, uh, where you will always have supplies of meat and anything you want. This is a method that we, 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 we are, we're sharing with you. Would you, would you like to, for us to show you uh, how to raise corn and, and not on a plot, but in acreage so that you can feed, feed more, more, more people, including ourselves? And we'll live uh, in peace with you, side by side? But they didn't have that uh, uh, that, that, that uh, sensitivity or that uh, because they've been raised by an invisibly white in God, supported by visibly white in nature. And when that occurs to you, 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 you become uh, you, you, because they, they, they thought of themselves as bigger, like, like uh, Iblis. Iblis was the bigot, you know, he's better than uh, Adam, you know? And we know that life comes out of dead, the dead earth. Life comes out of dead earth. And if you show how life can be, if you cultivate it, that's why we call it cultivation, agriculture, to cultivate it and you will get uh, you, you, you get more plentiful that you could, that you can use. He said, Almighty God said, uh, you know, look out into the earth and use it, use it up. See if you can use it up. Challenge, that was a challenge. So that you, so more people can benefit from the blessings of Almighty God. And you take that and you use that as a, as a way of uh, and, and endearing uh, yourself to each other because everybody is benefiting from it, not just one man or one group. What, what are you talking about? Billionaire, billionaire? He can't spend, what is he talking about? A billion, billion what? Show me a billion of something. Show me a trillion of something. And you can't, you can't use it, you can't build it. All you, you can do is uh, rub your ego and cause, and cause dissension uh, and hatred among the people. And so that you can be, even if you're a king, but what, what you gonna do as a king? You have to, you eat out of your, you only have one mouth to eat. You only have a chance.
Hey, you know, professor, as you were talking about, show me a billion, you know, I was thinking about, I was saying, yeah, you know, they're not spending all this money they supposed to. You know what I was thinking about cryptocurrency, right? It, it, uh, they done created a digital currency, right? That uh, that's supposed to be so valuable, right? You know, where it doesn't have any material existence. It's just existing in cyberspace somewhere, right? And uh, and it's worth this and it's worth that. Now, you know, I was just thinking, I said, supposing there was a, all of a sudden a real change of the environment and now all of a sudden seashells became the, the model of a change, exchange, you know what I mean? Now you got all these dollars. You got all this money. And it doesn't happen, you were saying, well, show me a, show me a billion of this, a billion of that.
So.
It's really, it's really, it's only an illusion, right?
That's right, because uh, it's, it's like uh, the angels, Marak and Harak, who taught the people this, these methods. And they, and, and, and they made sure to say that, look, we don't, we haven't taught you this so that uh, 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 you know, you can bear witness against us on the day of judgment. But we warn you, we warn you, don't use, don't use this for corruption, you know? So, so.
Better get you some real property. You better do something with that money.
That's why they call it real estate.
That's right.
You know, real estate, you know? And, and you can only uh, uh, you know, if you ask any of the kings and queens, even now today, you go to, you know, and you know, England and, and Germany has some, and of course France has some of the, the, the largest uh, castles and palaces. But if you, if you put a uh, a detection on, on the king, you find out he only used three, three rooms. Someplace, someplace where he could sleep and someplace he, it clean itself.
Yeah.
He might have a hundred and fifty rooms and a fortress and a moat and a big gate and soldiers all around. What kind, that, that sound, that sound like a prison to me. I know, big gates, big gates.
You're out of framing now.
Oh.
Thank you, thank you.
You playing with yourself.
How about that?
Better, yes.
All right. So uh, Michael, share some thoughts and that, invite our audience, please, uh, share some comments if you will, we'd like to.
Uh, we've got a lot of people that have, 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 have thoughts to share, but they appear to be in listening mode. Bilal wants to.
Which is good.
Bilal wants to come in. Bilal?
Yeah, praise be to Allah. You know, I have a, I have a great desire, a great, it's a, it's a serious urge to become a business person. Because you, you know, we have a need going on right now with uh, CWSC and AM three sixty. And uh, it's kinda like a deficit that, that we, you know, Insha Allah, we go ahead on and get taken care of. And so um, you know, they say the best, you know, I think the best charity is something one that just given and, and, and solid though. But I wanna put this out there only because I like just uh, see somebody who won't, won't just go ahead on and go, get in that mode with me. But, but until that deficit is gone, I'll be giving a, a hundred thousand months, the boy's getting that taken care of. And Insha Allah, so, so um, CWSC, AMT, we won't have to get into no type of long situation. I, I, I would hope Nala will come forth and say something about that, but I know she might be feeling, saying me about it. I just happened to hear.
I don't, I don't think so.
Last night.
Yeah, I, I don't. We have, we have telephones like that, but uh, certainly we should uh, we should add. We should wanna know where we could send help if there was, if there is the need for that. So we definitely like to know where the contributions can go to. And uh, I'm gonna do something myself when I catch up on things a little bit better.
Bila.
Allah wants to share that, where we can send that address. We wish he, wish he would come on and let us know that uh, where we can uh, send the contribution to. And we are on YouTube, others may want to know as well, where they could send help.
And I'd like to uh.
Thank you, brother.
This, this uh, the idea is, is firmly planted in our way of life. The, the, the idea of sadaqah. Sadaqah is really what's called a proof. We prove our, our, our commitment, our faith by giving outside of the obligation. We, the obligation of zakat is an obligation on those what, that identify as Muslim, whether they at a particular time able to give that or not. There's still, every Muslim, whether you're poor, you got resources or you don't have resources. The obligation of, of zakat is on every Muslim. So if I'm poor, I have to find a way to work my way out of my poverty. I have to find a way and seek help from those that know how to make money. You know, have my ear open to those that know how to follow patterns that will lead you to material uh, stability and success. This is, this is an obligation, this is an obligation. This is, this is an obligation, this is an obligation. Zakat is not just the poor rate. Imam Muhammad elevated our thinking in terms of the logic of, of these principles. Zakat is the economic system for the Muslim community. And what's, what's the basis of it? Purifying the material resources.
Yes.
I, I have an obligation to get my resources, material resources, and honestly, you know, honestly, I have a material obligation to spend intelligently what I, what I, what I, what I've earned honestly. I have an obligation to give some of that, those resources to help those that are needing, to help them, like, I, I think, uh, someone mentioned, was it you, Rabani, that mentioned teach a person how to fish? Rather than, rather than giving them fish, teach them how to fish? These are obligations within the religion that if we would give more attention to, we'd be more successful. We've got seven minutes.
Yes, so I'm, well, praise be to Allah, you know, this, this has been an interesting presentation, uh, El Mount, neighborly needs. And, and all of the things we've talked about, even, even what this, what you just finished describing, Michael, is, is part of they being, having this spirit of, uh, kinship to each other and wanting for each other what we want for ourselves and wanting society to have, what you, when you mentioned zakat as the economic Islamic economic system, to have the life, have a system in place that helps everyone to have a better life, have a better future. And community, community wise, and we, we underestimate to the, the power of giving. We underestimate the power of giving. Professor, share some final thoughts if you will, we got about five minutes now, I think.
Yes.
Well, I just, um, I just want to close out by saying that, uh, uh, we have to work in the community. It makes lifting the, uh, the weight of, uh, the, uh, objects that's in the way. We, if we lift all together, we can move the objects off, uh, from the, from our pathways that prevent us from making, uh, uh, community pro- uh, uh, progress. So, uh, and we have to be, we have to be more patient with each other, having more patience with each other.
Yes.
And you have to be un- understanding that people wish, wish to slow your progress, but Allah knows this. So don't add to their, uh, system of trying to, uh, stop of this progress, but because it only delays it for, for a moment. But, but I, our, uh, 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 members and our believers should be at the forefront of being patient and persevering. That's, that's all I have to say.
Praise be to God, yes.
Hey, thank you, professors.
You're out of, you're out of framing, man.
All right, thank you. I'm, 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 uh, relaxing here and I apologize to our audience. Uh, so Michael, share some thoughts if you will. I, I just want to appreciate, I want to say I'm appreciative for this, this platform that we have where we can share these thoughts with our fellow citizens, as you mentioned, and invite them to, to look at new, a new way of thinking. You know, and, uh, drop, dropped old Confucius says, to keep doing the same thing expecting a different result is insanity. Yes, so, uh, think of, think of some new ways, try some of these things we talk about. Uh, prayer, one focus, one creator, thinking like that, that as one creator for humanity, humanity is one. We are all one people, et cetera. Purify, get that burden of racism and bigotry and prejudice and hatred and, and arrogance and looking, looking at another people as, as inferior, you get it off your heart and you, you'll be much better for it. Thank you, Michael.
Martha, Martha, uh, Nala, the executive director of Community Wide Shura Conference, uh, wants to join in. Uh, Assalamualaikum, Martha Nala.
Alaikum Assalam, and I think I should take a minute and a half, everyone, as we have two and a half minutes, I believe. Uh, thank Allah for, uh, uh, Bilal and for all who are interested. Uh, our CWSC strategic planning process has begun as of Wednesday, the fifth and Thursday, the sixth, as we explained, uh, transparency wise to the audiences listening. Uh, the charitable effort, meaning the tax exempt, is being regained, is under, uh, exploration right now, meeting and greet, we have been meeting with different individuals, but uh, for anyone wanting to send donations, we want you to know that is not, at this point, it will not be tax exempt, but it will, once we get the status, it will be retroactive. Uh, and so we're asking everyone right now to please send to the address, money orders or checks, what, uh, to four nine zero five, and we'll give this continuously throughout the strategic planning process.
Could it be put in the chat box?
It's in the chat box right now, yes, sir.
Oh, great, great, point that out, please.
So, yes, yes, Alhamdulillah. So that's to the St. Petersburg office for CWSC and make it specifically for the regaining or of, 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 uh, the tax exempt status.
Give the address, I interrupted you too, for those who may not be in the chat box, could, uh.
Yes, sir. It's four nine zero five, thirty fourth Street South, St. Petersburg, Florida, three, three, seven, one, two. Again, four nine zero five, thirty fourth Street South, St. Petersburg, Florida, three, three, seven, one, two. And please, uh, title it headed with CWSC and then in the notation, please make it identifiable for the, the five oh one C three status, tax exempt status.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got a little less than one minute now.
Go ahead, Michael, close us out, please.
Want to close out with supplication. Allah, guide us among those you've guided right. Save us among those you save. Bless us in whatever you give us and deliver us from the harm that you judge. You judge, none can judge against you, and those whom you befriend are not disgraced. Assalamualaikum.
I mean, alaikum assalam, warahmatullahi wa barakatuh, peace and blessings to everyone.
Yes, thank you for a great presentation. And, uh, I'm just going to reclaim the whole seat briefly and, uh, stop the live stream.